Welcome everyone to our August 19, 2025 Angels Camp Civic Council meeting. We will be returning to closed session after this meeting, so there's nothing to report out with that. Having said, roll call.
Councilmember Bee Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sharato.
Here.
Mayor Chavente.
Present.
And Kara Scott.
Here.
And Councilmember Brolio.
Here.
Thank you. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As I stated previously, we will be returning to closed session after our regular meeting. Item number six, approval of the agenda. I have some changes for the order of the agenda. Okay, I would like to move item G after item B. And, I'm sorry. Help me out here, Amy. I want to move item E after item B.
Yes.
And move item G after item C. That way our two consultants, their items will be back to back.
Do we want to go B, E, G, C?
A, B, E.
A, B, E, yeah.
A, B, E, G, C.
C, G, then D. Okay, so that'd be a test, but our consultants, we're doing it for a couple of reasons. One of them is it combines their two agenda items, and the other is, is that our consultants, you know, are paid on an hourly basis, and so it's more cost effective for us to do that and for them and their time. So I appreciate those changes. With that, is there a motion to approve?
On the public.
Oh, what, don't I?
Does that spell?
Oh, does the public have any questions about the changes to the agenda?
No, do they have any changes to the agenda?
Oh, do you have any changes to the agenda?
I'll move to accept as amended.
I'll second.
Okay. Moving on to number five.
We have a roll call.
Roll favor. Oh, roll call.
Bee Hill.
Aye.
Sharato.
Aye.
Chavente.
Aye.
Scott.
Yeah, aye.
And Brolio.
Aye.
Okay.
Would you like to go for dinner?
Item seven, public comment. The public may address the council on any item of public interest, not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes per person. Please, if you'd like to speak, go to the podium and please just turn it on.
I can't, look, seats too wide.
It's adjustable.
Good evening, please state your name.
Good evening, I'm Carolyn Smith. I'm representing Angels Camp Business Association, and I'm here to talk to you about the Christmas parade. It will be on December 6th this year, and we would like to ask the city council to waive all the fees, and we would also like to ask the city council to be actively participating in the parade. I would like to have all of you there and on a float, walking in a car, something, so that the city can see you.
Okay.
Quick question, as long, because I've been years on a float as a city council, or we've been there individually, doesn't matter, right? Or do you want a city council?
I would like a city council presence.
Okay, so it doesn't matter. Me either.
Any other questions? Okay.
I'll put it like now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll just add that request to a future agenda. Thank you.
Hi, Veronica Tildy. I just want to say thank you for being mindful of our budget and moving those items around. And again, I'd like to invite you all to come down to the farmer's market on Friday. Starts at 4:30, it's at Utica Park, and the vendors are thrilled to be back in the park. The families and all attending seem to be very thrilled to be back in the park. And it would be lovely to see all your faces down there and possibly, you know, carry around your signs and say, hi, city council.
Yeah.
Chief of Police.
Is that a sign or a truck?
Anything. And also, of course, our city staff, you know, the people that are in the office aren't seen. The public would love to know who you are. I know who you are, but, you know, it'd be great to see you guys out there and saying hello, because that's what makes this small town so special. And I really do appreciate when you guys come to the ribbon cuttings and, you know, for grand openings. Again, let's just keep that good, small-town feel and that we're all here, we're all neighbors. Even if we don't live in town, we're all neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Any other public comment? Michelle, I haven't asked, do we have anybody online?
We do have a few people online, but no comment right now.
No public comment? Okay. Any other public comment? Sam is going to walk to the mic? No, no, okay. So hearing none, we'll move on to item eight. There were two consent agenda items. Item A is approved draft minutes of August 5, 2025. Item B, receive and file accounts payable, checks, and treasury report for the month of July. Does any council member wish to pull an item off the consent agenda? None? Does any member of the public wish to pull the consent agenda off? Is there anyone online? Michelle, would you like to pull an item off the consent agenda?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
Still move. Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Any discussion from the public, either here or online? Hearing none, roll call.
Bee Hill.
Aye.
Sharato.
Aye.
Chavente.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Brolio.
Aye.
Okay. So will I have a question?
Sir.
We are on item nine A, review planning commission applications, conduct interview process, and appoint two planning commissioners. We had three applications, and one of the applicants, the applicant is not here. How do we proceed with that?
Would you like to postpone it to a later date?
I don't know if anybody.
She's supposed to call in. She's going to call.
Oh, are you in?
She's going to be by phone. By phone.
Oh, you mean we have to call her?
Yes.
Okay, okay, since, okay, so she won't be here.
By phone.
Okay, so then I will take everything back, I didn't know that.
Yes.
Thank you, Amy. I want to thank all of you, the two of you present and the one on the phone, for showing an interest in serving the citizens of Angels Camp. We will hold interviews publicly, and we'll ask the two of you to adjourn to this room over here.
I'll escort them, sir.
And then who's going to call?
Um, I will. She can call and I'll escort.
Okay, you escort.
Thanks, girl.
Patricia?
Yes?
Oh, welcome Patricia, and thank you for showing an interest in serving on our planning commission. We have questions to ask you, and we'll start with Councilmember Bee Hill with our first question.
Hi Patricia.
Hi, Doc.
Hi. Can you tell us briefly about yourself and what aspects best describe your qualifications to serve on the city's planning commission?
Um, let's see, I'm 67, I live alone, I've lived in the city in Angels for 44 years. As far as qualifications, I've been going to the city council meetings to learn more about how the city functions, that's what got me started going. And as far as experience, I would say I don't have any experience for a planning commission, I've done no sort of work like that. But I'm willing to learn, I'm intelligent, I'm a good learner, and I will put the time in.
Okay, thank you. Caroline?
This is Caroline. So what do you see as the role of a planning commissioner, commission member with respect to fellow planning commission members and also with regards to city council? So how do you see that role as a planning commission member?
From what I've observed, the planning commission basically looks into projects that are on, that are going to be done, and they, among themselves, look for the way forward for that project, whether it be working for contractors, buying items that need to be bought, and then they come to the city council with their recommendations. And that's, as far as it goes, they don't make the final decisions, the city council makes that. But they come to the council with their recommendations as far as looking into it, researching it, discussing it, and they have their recommendation, and then the council makes their decision from there.
This is Michael Trish. Would you have difficulty making a tough decision if you knew who the applicant was?
No, as far as a bid or something?
Well, if they, if they, if they put in an application that weren't against our current ordinances in building code, would you, would you find it difficult to make a decision that may not be a popular one?
No, I wouldn't, because there are standards and ordinance on the books that need to be followed first, and so I would probably apologize for this is the decision that's going to be made after the, after the committee discusses it, and just let them know the reasons that these are the reasons that are on the books that are going against you, and, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote for someone just because I knew them. So no, I would not have difficulty doing that.
Thank you.
I, yeah, I look at things, they have to be fair, but they have to also follow the law.
Thank you. And then we're going to move to Kara. Kara, do you have a?
Where is she? She's up there. Or do you want me to? Put her on.
Yeah. Sorry, I was going, I'm looking, this is, hi, I'm Kara. This is my first one, I'm kind of looking at the questions and we don't, so I'm kind of seeing, does it matter obviously what order we're going in?
No, it doesn't.
Just pick what, a question that was meaningful to you.
One question you can ask him, he'll ask both, all three of them.
We just got to ask them the same questions.
Okay. Do you have any conflicts that may prevent you from making an unbiased, did you just ask that question, unbiased decisions concerning planning, commission, agenda items?
Uh, Kara, I had a hard time understanding, you're talking a little too fast for me.
Sorry. Do you have any conflicts that may prevent you from making an unbiased decision concerning planning, commission, agenda items?
No, I have, no, I wouldn't have it, I, I wouldn't because, as far as I'm concerned, things have to flow and go, and I, there's, yeah, there is nothing that I have as a conflict that would stop me from making the decision I felt best. And there's always compromise on a committee when it's discussed.
Okay. Thank you. Alvin?
Give me one second, I'm ready.
Okay.
Hi Patricia, this is Alvin. My question to you would be, what do you see as the role slash purpose of a master plan or comprehensive plan such as the city general plan?
Okay, as far as I understand, the city plan or general plan is to guide the city in a forward direction for development, for the good of the public, and, um, sorry, I'm losing order.
No worries.
Yeah, yeah, the, the general plan has projects and things that need to be accomplished for the city to move forward, road jobs, things like that, and the planning commission looks at those with their recommendation and kind of just, as the city council wants those projects done, they take it on to do all the research and everything and make their recommendation, and it's basically the better of the public to not do anything that would adversely affect the public, and just have an agenda for something. It's, you can't do a project that's going to end up hurting the development of the city or the public that's living there, so it has to be looked at that way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trish.
Thank you. So thank you for, again, your interest in serving.
Who would you like next?
Wait, wait, I don't know, let me, for serving on the planning commission, and then we're going to move on to our next interviewee, and then you, we will contact you when we deliberate publicly. So thanks again, Trish.
Okay, thank you.
How about, would you pick Kara, please?
Sure.
Did you ask for, was it Klavy or was it Gary?
Okay.
He's in Klavy.
Gary.
Because she's, she has the same question, and she is.
I'm going to give his application.
Yeah. Hi, welcome, and thank you again for serving on our planning commission for over 20 years?
Eleven years.
Over 11 years, okay, okay. Well, thank, we have a series of questions to ask you, and we'll start with Scott, and we'll just kind of go down the line.
Hi Gary, I think you were coming along with the planning official when I was leaving.
I think that's, yeah.
Way back, way back. So Gary, can you tell us briefly about yourself, your quality, experience, expertise, and what aspects best describe your qualifications to serve on the planning commission?
Okay, if I can remember all those things, I'll do it. First of all, I come from a pioneer family, family's been in the area for 173 years. Italian and Danish side from Columbia, Malone's, and Angels Camp. Back to Kalupia's, Cuneo, so I've got that number of the families around here that it's , we are related to. I'm a trader from a ranch, shoot ranch between Lockford and Clemens, and I've, my vocation has been teaching. I've served as an art teacher, and art history particularly, and I enjoy things such as anything involved with the communities. I served down in Lockford where I also have a house on the Lockford Community Services District, which has been almost 24 years on that.
That's what the.
We've put in a park, and we're getting ready for our second city park, and I've been in Angels Camp 15 years, and I feel so much for home, at home up here, because it's not growing so much as it is down in the valley area. And we were up here all the time because of family, so at least once or twice a month of all my growing up, so that's why I like this much, this is all part of my home area. I enjoy the planning commission because I have a fascination with Angels Camp, coming through town as a child, always loved the raised sidewalks along the annex, and so that's where I built my place and restored one of the old Utica mine cabins.
Oh, wow.
That's on the property. And so I'm interested in Angels Camp for its feature because of its past. I think it's one of the nicest of the foothill cities, and I can see that we have a lot to be proud of, and also a lot to think about for our future. And one of the reasons I came on board was that I've been very interested in the trail along Angels Creek. I think that would be a great incentive with the city to not grow, because I don't want to see the city become large by any means. But tourists come here and enjoy it, with Greenhorn, the number of people that come to the facility over there, I guess that's one of their best facilities that Royal Mart has, and with that, people, tourists spend their money here and go home, and that's the nice thing about that. So that is what I think is number one for the city to consider, is that we need to get that park way going out toward Malone's, and more and more people will come then for that. If you take a look throughout the state, some of the areas that have really grown, Solvang because of its Danish heritage, and I have the affinity to that because of my background, but also the fact that it's very similar to here, but people come, people there all the time, a lot of activity. It's not large, it's small, people come and go. Mendocino, another little town filled with people. So that's what I think Angels needs to really concentrate on, is the tourist trade, and the park would give people the incentive of coming here, they like to walk, people enjoy that, the creek is a beautiful asset, we're probably one of the most fortunate cities in the state to have a waterway like this right through our town. And the museum is a wonderful place with the carriage collection. We have so many possibilities, and small towns are always strapped financially, and I think, you know, if we could just do a segment at a time of the park, just to get it going from this area, from Trion Park up just to the bridges here, that would be very noticeable for people. And so if we could do things like that, I think we could bring them into the town. Another thing that we could do is to create some of our carriage streets from Greenhorn into town for golf carts. They don't have to cross the highway, because I know that Pena State Highway, that's a problem, but we can bring them in to the Utica Park, which is so nice, or down by the hotel, Utica Hotel. And another thing I thought with our carriage collection, wouldn't it be nice to have horse-drawn carriages bringing people from, wow, Royal Mart, I always want to say Walmart, into town? We could have a weekend where there's parades with horses and carriages. So there's a lot of things that we could do like that to bring money into the town, into the city. And again, I think that would be a stimulus for hopefully some of the property owners in the historic part of downtown to fix up their buildings. So that's one of the reasons I wanted to come on the board, and I just enjoy that, selecting our signs and everything, which ones are all right, which ones aren't, et cetera, and all of these different things, I just enjoy that. And I would like to see Angels Camp be one of the places to go, come to.
Thank you. Caroline?
What do you see as the role of the planning commission member with respect to fellow planning commission members and also with regard to the city council?
Well, I enjoy everybody that's on the planning commission, I think we get along quite well, and it's not everybody always agreeing, but once we discuss things, it seems like we come together very easily. And I think as far as with the city council, I used to attend quite often until the pandemic, and then I kind of got out of the habit. But I think sometimes it would be kind of nice to have a little bit more activity between the two, more discussion, more planning with both groups, because we discuss all of the things, and it goes to you, but that's not person to person. And a lot of times, it's a lot nicer to have a more informal situation where we talk about these things and come together, and then I think both can work together a little bit more than just what our result is being sent to you.
Thank you. So Gary, I'm going to ask Kara to ask her question, because our questions kind of melded together, so we are asking the same questions to all of the candidates, except my question would be a repeat of hers, and so Kara, would you please ask your question?
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, sorry. Are you a member of any organizations that may influence your decisions?
No. I guess all of it comes from my own family's history, interest in the area, our family being here as long as it has, and my background is an art teacher, and specifically art history, and I had started studying as an architect, so I'm interested in historic buildings and all new buildings as well. So I think, I don't know if that's answering your question or not.
Okay, thank you. I, thank you.
Good evening, Gary. My question will be, what do you see the role slash purpose of the master plan or comprehensive plan such as the, such as the city's general plan?
What do I see?
Has the role?
Has the role.
Yep.
Okay, these set standards for us, they're a guideline, and something that's very, very important, we've been working with, Amy is so very good with planning, going through with the ordinances and everything that we discuss, we look at what changes have been that she's suggested, and it keeps us ahead of the ballgame, I think, when we are planning and also going back and changing ordinances to bring them up to date, because they were out of date, and that's an interesting thing to see, and to work it into Angels Camp, and how we put standards into place, so that it gives us a guideline and a good basis for making decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you, Erin. And again, thank you for showing an interest that you have had in serving, and thank you for wanting to continue your service. We're going to move on to the next candidate. Thank you very much.
One more thing, Utica Park is something to be proud of, it's a nice change, and that was a very exciting opening of that.
Thank you, thank you. Hi, good evening, ladies, welcome, and thank you for showing an interest in continuing serving on the planning commission. We have a number of questions to ask you, and we're going to start with Scott.
Okay. Hi there. Can you tell us briefly about yourself, briefly about yourself, qualities and experience, expertise? Qualities and experience expertise, and what aspects best describe your qualifications to serve on the planning commission?
Hey, hello, okay, great, hi, my name's Claybeen Went. And I come from local business, local business family, the Wentz, George and Wentz, started Oars Whitewater Racing Company. And so I've grown up in Angels Camp and have, suppose that I'm coming at this from a business perspective in the hopes of being a part of helping Angels Camp modernize, develop, and grow its security.
Thank you. Carolyn.
What do you see as the role of a planning commission member with respect to fellow planning commission members and also with regard to city council?
Well, I've been a part of the planning commission now for a year, having stepping in, sort of subbing in for Mr. Whittle, brother Whittle. And in just this first year, I've learned that it is a teamwork, team working exercise. You have to have confidence in the city staff, which I do have tremendous confidence in Amy. This last year has been very educational, working with excellent city staff. And it's just, it takes a village. So I guess I'm still in the learning mode, having only been here for a year. But we hope that I can learn a few more things to help the city in the next three years.
Thank you. And Cara and I asked very similar questions. And so we're going to ask, I'm going to ask Cara to ask her a question, which is very similar to mine. So we are asking all the candidates the same question, or interviewees. So Cara, please.
Hi, Mr. Went. Okay. Are you a member of any organization that may influence your decisions?
Oars is a member of Angels Camp Visitors Bureau, developed Destination Angels Camp, the local tourism boards. So being in that business arena, I suppose I am a proponent of tourism. And so I might have a soft spot in my heart for tourism development in the city. But other than that, I can't think of anything.
Thank you.
And I have the last question. Thank you for being here tonight. What do you see as the role slash purpose of the master plan or comprehensive plan such as the city's general plan?
Okay, well, that's a great question. I'm not exactly sure. But what I would guess would be that it's a document that helps us all get on the same page as a community. Just helps spell out all the rules and all the regs, which the city is actively evolving with itself. It's definitely modernizing. But you have codes and compliance, along with setting out a roadmap for future development and future growth. I believe, planning documents that you mentioned, something like that.
Perfect, thank you.
Again, thank you for.
Do you want to mark this again?
Thank you for showing an interest in continuing serving on the planning commission.
So I guess you could take.
We all need to get all three of them. Trish, back off the phone. Again, thank you for showing an interest in continuing serving or wanting to serve on our planning commission. The council will now deliver it and then we'll open it to public comment. Does anyone want to start?
I'd just like to say thank you for all three of you guys. Trish, I don't know if you can hear me, but thank you for showing interest. It's great to have people interested in somebody from 10, 11 years to a year, to Trish as being new. So thank you very much for that's all I have.
I concur.
Is there any, Scott, any comments? Good. Cara?
Cara.
Is there any public comment regarding this process or anyone online, Michelle?
No questions online.
Okay. So hearing none, we need to select two from our three candidates. Is there a recommendation from council for the two?
What's that protocol? Do we do one at a time?
Oh, we do one at a time. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Carolyn.
Well, I appreciate Gordon's experience and leadership on the commission and I would like to see that continue so I'll nominate Gordon.
There's been a first and a second, any other discussion? Any discussion from the public? Anyone online, Michelle? Hearing none, roll call.
Be Hill?
Aye.
Sharato?
Aye.
Shamente?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And Brolio?
Aye.
So I guess moving on, I will make a motion for Mr. Went.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second, any other discussion from council? Hearing none, any discussion from the public? Hearing none, anyone online, Michelle?
No.
Okay, roll call.
Yes, Be Hill?
Aye.
Sharato?
Aye.
Shamente?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Brolio?
Aye.
Thank you.
And I wanted to address Patricia, I wanted to thank her for submitting your application. I know you've come to a lot of council meetings and it's super appreciated on your participation. And I just felt like with Claybeen only having one year under his belt and then Gary having 10 and you being new. But if an opportunity comes open for an appointment or anything like that, please, you know, come back again.
We would encourage you to apply.
And that's what I was saying, Claybeen, I think you.
You got appointed.
Twice too, right?
Yeah, it came the first time.
Right, and the first time we didn't. So, thank you very much, Patricia, I appreciate it.
And thank you, gentlemen, for serving.
Thank you.
So do you guys have to shut up?
Congratulations. If you guys would like to.
Congratulations, guys.
Okay, thank you.
God, I want to know some of your history, you probably have some family.
I spoke with my wife a lot. Standing in front of the park.
Yeah. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So moving on to item B. Adopt Resolution 25-65, thereby authorizing release of construction documents for bidding for City of Angels Vallesito Road Sewer Replacement Project, WWCS 1. Dave.
Mr. Mayor of City Council, we're before you receive, asking for approval, authorization to release plans and specifications for the replacement of the Vallesito Road Sewer. The sewer that runs right here in front of the fire station. It's a project, it's the second project, follow-up project to our Boosterway Sewer Replacement Project that we completed last year. It's the second project of ultimately four projects to expand and upgrade the main sewer line for the community in that. This project will start at the top of the project will start at Triumph Park, picking up where the Boosterway project finished. Will actually move the sewer, as part of this project, will move the sewer out of the way of any future improvements in that at Triumph Park to get people to, that we don't have, you know, manholes and things of that nature that are right in the way of the volleyball area where they now play in that. So that's one of the benefits of this project. We are also, as part of this project, making sure that we move utilities out of the way for our future Angels Creek Trail project and that. So it's a benefit in that respect also. We build the project all the way to the, essentially down Vallesito's Road to the, almost to the bridge. And we'll finish, we'll finish in the parking area, that'll be the last piece of work on that project on the sewer site. That sets us up for our next project, later, probably early next year, which is being funded by FEMA. It's a rehabilitation of the next segment of the sewer, basically across Angels Creek and along Angels Creek. The other element of the project, the other element of the project of this project is we do some waterline construction, again, down at this end of Vallesito's Road. And again, that is a prelude to work that will be done on the next sewer project. As, again, as part of the FEMA funded project, where we replace the pipelines that are across the two bridges, both on Main Street and here at Vallesito Road. So we're set, this project is, not only follows up on our Boosterway project, but it sets us up as the next step in this process of upgrading sewer. We're set up for the next sewer project and then we are putting building the foundation for the waterline replacement project. And waterline replacement and next sewer project are funded, will be funded, well, 75% funded by FEMA.
And thank you, and thank you. I appreciate the fact that we're seeing CIP projects come one right after another. We're ticking off the list that we approved. That's, I appreciate your efforts in making sure that projects are lined up and we're ready to go so that we can clearly modernize or truly modernize our sewer water system. So my comment to you in question is the trenches that you open now for sewer aren't going to have to be reopened for the FEMA project, are they?
No.
Okay.
No. As I say, we're tailoring the FEMA project to now match up with what we're finishing, what will be finished on the Vallesito Road project.
Okay.
That was part of the reason of modifying the design ever so slightly so that we don't do what you just described.
Perfect. I appreciate you taking that in consideration. Scott, any comments?
No.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, Dave. So with the 14-month project on Main Street that Caltrans has commenced on, how is that, this going to impact additional, because a lot of people are using the bypass to kind of get around? Is the work that's going to be done here in the fall, is it coming out into the roadway or is it pretty much staying like where the parking lot and along the park?
It's staying, that's pretty much along the parking lot and the park. Now, there are instances during the day where depending, the project will basically be built in three stages, kind of the lower, middle, and upper. When we're here in the lower and middle stages, we will have traffic control during, you know, during the daytime as part of that. In other words, when I say traffic control, we'll end up closing one lane and we'll have flaggers that will have to bring the traffic through. And so there may be people that are going to detour around Vallesito's Road and, you know, end up on Murphy's Grave Road and things like that. But our work, our work ends at the end of the parking area. We don't go any further than that. So we're not into, we're not into Main Street on this project. The next project.
Right, with the, right, because it's with the bridges.
Correct.
And that won't be till next spring?
Yes, I mean, that's the, that's the goal, isn't it? I'm smiling at Aaron because he'll be working on that project and it's, we do have to get it funded through, finalize the funding through FEMA.
Okay.
Alvin?
No questions.
Cara, do you have any questions for Dave regarding this item?
Carolyn, Carolyn, God, because mine was, the traffic control was more my question than that. Sounds good.
Is there any comments from the public present?
I have questions.
Okay. Well, you can probably.
It's me. I'm the public. Hi, Veronica Matelley. In regards to this, so what are your dates hoping to start and finish approximately?
Okay, so we'll be opening, we open bids at the, in early fall. We open bids in September, work will probably start in November. It has a six-month timeline, so we're in April, May. Now, I've got my fingers crossed, the last two projects that we've, that we have advertised and built, we finished early.
Right.
And so we've got our fingers crossed that we get done early. But we'll be very, you know, obviously very cognizant of trying to get this done, you know, with the least impact of cost. But it's a November to April, May timeline.
Okay. And just as part of the public, I know it's pain because Main Street's pain right now, but that's life. It's not the end of the world. And the end result's going to be awesome. And so this, it's like, I know that a lot of people talk about our sewers and our drains and our water and everything. So I just see this as positive. And I know that there's people out there that are going to be like, that's the way I get around town. But oh well, deal with it. It's like.
We fight minutes early.
We fight minutes early, you know? But, so thank you. And thank you for finding some funding for this. That's, and thank you, city council, for getting these things going. Let's get things going. Thank you, appreciate it.
Well, I think what's important also is by modernizing the sewer, by modernizing the sewer, we make Chris's life a lot easier.
The whole bird's way creek.
Well, it makes all work.
Is scary.
Is this going to take care of?
Creek sewer line is not, no, it's not good, it's not good.
Is this going to take care of some of that eye-to-eye problem also? Okay, well, perfect, perfect, perfect. Thank you, Dave. Oh, wait a minute, are there any comments from the public? Anyone online?
Nope.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Public motion to adopt Resolution 25-65.
I'll second.
There's been a motion. There's been a motion in two seconds. Any other discussion? Any discussion from the public? Anyone online, Michelle?
Online, but no.
No comments? Roll call, please.
Yes. Be Hill?
Aye.
Sharato?
Aye.
Shamente?
Aye.
Scott? And Brolio?
Aye.
We are now moving to item number E. Introduce, waive the first reading by substitution of title, hold a public hearing, and schedule September 2nd, 2025 for a second reading of ordinance 551, replacing and updating City of Angels Municipal Code, Chapter 14.55, protecting the city's water system through controlled black backflow and cross connections. Amy?
Mayor and council members, the ordinance you didn't know you needed. But basically what we're trying to do is clarify exactly what the requirements are and the standards are, as well as what portion of the city is responsible for in our system and what portions the public is responsible for. And with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Dave in case you have any questions. Because this is actually his question.
Just a quick comment in that we talked about cross connection control. What we're dealing with is ensuring that there isn't contamin, uh, an opportunity for our water system to be contaminated. Not intentionally, but unintentionally. And so it just becomes really paramount that we have an ordinance in place that clearly defines the responsibility of the city versus the responsibility of the landowner and that. This is an ordinance that is consistent with other ordinances. There was a paramount of research that was done by our consultant, you know, right then, these changes. They've been scrutinized by our city engineer. And so it's a way frankly of bringing us, I won't say into the 20th century, but definitely apt to the state of where we, where the state expects the community to be. And it is, it's just, as I say, you just, you know, just kind of ponder the idea of contaminating your water system because you don't have the proper cross connection controls. That is just all the work that everybody does to deliver the water, to have something like that as a threat to the system is just, you know, you don't even want to think about it. So that's the purpose of really modernizing and revising this one.
Any comments from council?
So is this, this responsibility of citizens, that's for new development, right? Everybody with a current house in there, everybody, it's not, so we don't have to worry about all of a sudden having to comply with some issue.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It would be though if someone pulled a permit to drill a well, right?
Yes. Yes.
It doesn't have a lot of those of the city.
Well, we might, but you could put up one on your property.
No, I'd have to have water, to the water.
But there's a, so you couldn't, you couldn't drill a well for domestic use?
I don't know, I don't think so. Because it's.
Maybe conditional use, right. You want to irrigate your. You irrigate your-
Not right, not if you have the city sewer or city water line.
Okay, I didn't know that, okay, okay.
Great, everybody's starting drilling wells now.
No, no. I'm just trying to think of when a backflow device would be used, I mean-
So landscaping, if you're putting landscaping.
Landscaping, okay.
If you have an industry-
Yeah.
Or, you know, a hotel. You know, that's where you see, and I, there's a number, there's a, part of, part of the work that's been done recently and, and a new cross-connect, connection control plan that has been prepared and submitted to the state and that, you know, there is a survey that's been done and I, there's a dozen or so backflow preventers that are inspected on an annual basis by a cross-control specialist. And so it's, 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 it's the state, the state takes it very seriously. And, you know, so it's, it's, they're art, they're out there, they're not, you don't necessarily, unless you're kind of an engineer that looks at things, you're not really looking for backflow preventers as you're, as you're driving along the street, but you, you will, and if you start thinking about it, you'll see them and then you realize that, wow, that's a, you know, that's potential contamin, point of contamination by us not being able to use.
Yeah. Like, so is it on remodels too or is it just on new construction? Okay.
Alvin, any questions?
No.
Kara?
Yep.
Okay. Any comments from the public?
Please ask a question.
Sure, go ahead.
My only question would be, is there a cost to this for anybody? If we're going to put in a house, is there extra costs?
There, there is a, there really is not a cost to the individual in that, other than having the proper, the proper device in that. This, the city makes these inspections as, on an annual basis and there is no charge. Chris, my honest, do they, we don't charge the, the-
We do. We do, there's a small fee.
Oh, there's a small fee, I apologize.
Yeah, for hiring a consultant, a third party.
What's that small fee?
Uh, I want to say like $50. But we, we just, we don't, we don't mark it up, it's just passed straight through what the city pays to hire the consultant, we will charge the individuals, that's it.
We have to have it done.
Yeah, there's a special, there's a special license that essentially the consultant has that, that's, that's part of, you know, basically you're paying for a specialist to come in and make sure that, you know, that somehow your device is working. And so in reality, it's, it's a, it's a benefit to the, to the landlord to know that his backflow preventer is, is working. Because if it's not, then there's a whole series of actions that, you know, come into play and that's defined in the new ordinance and that.
Go ahead.
No, we, we have to do it yearly.
At the high school?
Well, at Calvar's telephone, we used to use Garrett, I think he's retired, now we're actually using Ryan. It's just, it's just a yearly inspection, it's a small nominal fee that you gotta pay and it's just for his services to come check, it takes him 20 minutes or whatever, not very long, and then he certifies it or tells you if there's cracking leaks or whatever, so, yeah.
Any other public comment? Anyone online? Michelle?
No comment online.
Can you hear none? This is an action item, is there a motion to approve? Oh, we're doing, we're gonna, plus we're gonna hold, okay. So we're gonna introduce and waive the first reading now. Okay. Thank you, Dave. Moving on to item-
C.
C. Pavement management plan and road maintenance, Aaron. I want to, before Aaron began, I want to thank you and Chris for doing what you guys have done up to this point to bring it to our attention. It's something that I know the council has been wanting and talking about for a number of years. And I see this the same as I see our water sewer CIP projects. We now have a plan that we can allocate dollars to and move forward. So again, thank you, both of you. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
Aaron?
Good evening, I'm switching between my glasses and my, uh, not so I can see the, the screen and my, my notes. So the pavement management plan, I've been working pavement management probably for about 12 years. And when I was with Anlar County, it became abundantly clear that we didn't have enough money to maintain the roads that we had to maintain, to maintain miles. And so I was looking for a more objective way to manage the asset of the pave system. And there was pavement management programs out there, there was people that did these inventories, they assessed your roads, and we hired one of those consulting firms to come in there, assess the roads, and what it did is it, it essentially showed how much liability the city has or the county has to maintain their assets. And that's, we've got a, a lot less roads in Angels Camp than I had before in Anlar County, but we've got about 30 miles of roads, it's about 3.3 million square feet of pavement. If we had to reconstruct that asset, it would cost about $24 to $30 million. So that's about what that assets were. Our budget is about $300,000 a year, plus or minus, and so we've got like 1% of the value of the asset to try to maintain it. So our task is to try to present a plan for the council to adopt where it's something that makes sense. And what we're trying to do is try to maintain the asphalt that's in good condition, in that good condition, because it once drops to a poor condition, it, the value, the cost to improve that goes from like 50 cents to $2, to $4.5, to 8, to 10. So it goes up steeply, very, very quickly. And then once you get in that poor condition, it's the same treatments to fix it this year as it is next year. So in the next five years, what is recommended in this plan is to try to do those maintenance techniques to get the roads that are in the, the good or very good condition to keep them up there before we start attacking the roads that are in very poor condition. Now, with that being said, if the council wants to direct, hey, we would like to address certain specific areas, happy to do that. This is just a plan, plans are, you have Plan A and then you have Plan B and then you do what you have to do, right? So you may, you may adjust to that. Can you move to the next slide, please? So this slide is, you know, five-year budget and what we have in there is after consultants' fees, we got about, again, $300,000 a year. And so for the 2526 project, there was a stopgap project that was approved in, uh, it's May or June. And essentially that project is going to go in and we're going to go look at all the roads, we're going to campaign, we're going to mark out all the cold patches that have been done, that haven't been replaced with hot patch, we're going to find the structural failures. Structural failure is sometimes we observe as a pothole, heavy alligatoring, structural deficiencies where the base rock, the whole structure needs to be replaced, or if there's like severe alligatoring where the structure may be still level and not showing any deflection, we can remove like two inches of the asphalt and inlay a new asphalt layer there. And so we're going to try to be doing that localized areas throughout the community to address that we call a stopgap because we're going to try to stop those, those areas from growing and making a road that may be in good condition to going into the poor condition. After that, after you do like a stopgap project, you want to apply a, a slurry type seal to it to keep the water from intruding into it and keep the road in a good condition. What's on there is a rapid setting slurry, it's a, it's got aggregate in it, helps, it provides a wear surface, it's more intensive than a, just a parking lot slurry, which you may be familiar with, I mean, if you go some slurys or parking lot, they like paint it black and restripe it. It's more intensive than that, it lasts longer. And again, it seals the, it seals the cracks that were, or the joints from where the stopgap project, where the digouts were performed, the structural repairs were made so that the road can continue to have an extended service life.
Aaron, is an example of that on Gardner Lane now?
That is a chip seal, yes, so that's, that's a little bit more intense than a, a rapid set slurry. So that would be a more intense treatment if the road was in a little bit rougher shape. When I say rougher shape, it's, it's objective, it's subjective, you go out there, you look at, you say this is a better candidate for this, it's got more weathering of the surface, it's got more weathering, we want to put a thicker product down there to, to make up for that weathering of the existing surface. So yeah, Gardner Lane was an, is an excellent, excellent example of that. So you, then you come back and do another stopgap type project to find, to continue where you left off, because we're not going to have enough budget to address every structural failure in the city. So we're going to, you know, address them one year, come back and put a slurry over them, address them again, put a slurry over them. That's the recommended treatment for the, for the next five years. In between those treatments, it's not on the list here, but I put it in the definitions in the, I guess, sorry, I'm on a roll and I'm not going through my slides. Can you go to the, go one more? So go to the next one. Two more, to Gardner Lane. So Gardner, this is the Gardner Lane example where we applied a chip seal this summer and then in the red box, the last calculated PCI, which was in 2019, which was the last time the roads were surveyed, had a PCI from, what, 65 to 43? And then after the treatment of the chips, the chip seal, it went up to, you know, from 75 to, to 59, so significantly increased the pavement condition of that asset. And if we go back one slide, thank you for, one more? One more, I think? Yeah. This is a dashboard, this is a screenshot from Street Saver, which is a database where the pavement assets live, where it's all, each of the roads is divided into little sections that were inspected. And what this is telling us, on the right-hand side is the pavement condition right now is 59 and 59 is in the good range. So we want, we're, as a whole asset, we're in decent shape, we're not in horrible shape. We've got some roads that are in not as good a shape. Our arterials are, they're in the pink, they're in the middle, they're like a 38 PCI. Our collectors are 55, our residentials are 60, it looks like, my guess is 50. It's a little small, sorry, I apologize for that, it's hard to read. So our system is in decent shape, we want to keep it in decent shape. Let's go forward on the slide, please. So this is the slide that has a table representing the values of different treatments in the color code. We have a, a map of the streets and we can, we can show them by these color codes, you can see what the streets look like. And when you see the red, that's something that needs a lot of money to it, green needs less money to it, it's in pretty good shape, blues and yellows, likewise, they follow the same suit there.
And that's based on 2019 still?
That is 2019, correct. So it would be a good idea in the next year or two to budget to go through and do another assessment of the roads, to see where we're at, to check the degradation, because again, we're working on data that's six years old and they should be done in three to five years. So we're, we're right at that timeframe where those should be done.
Can you do that with a visual inspect, inspection?
That's absolutely how it's done, yes.
So staff could do that internally?
No, no. They, they could, so I, I, they could, but they would need to be trained. So in order to do the assessment, you, you go through training so that you can understand how to score it. And if you're, if you're not trained and you don't do it frequently, at the beginning of the day, your scores will be one way, and at the end of the day, if you come and grade that same section, they'll probably be different. So you gotta calibrate your eyes and you gotta be very, very objective as to what you're looking at there. And that, that was, when I did my training, that was the most difficult part, so you need to get to the end of the day and, you know, if it's, if it's March and it's, it's nice outside, it's not as bad as August when it's, you know, 110 degrees outside, you're trying to do the same thing. You want to be very consistent with the way that you're measuring roads. So staff could do it, they'd have to go through training, and I would, I would say it takes a little bit of time with someone looking over your shoulder so that you can be confident in the assessments that you're given.
So what you're proposing with this five-year plan is taking the condition of the roads when they, during that last study and then creating a timeline to, to repair those roads, Dan?
We're, yeah, we're going to be addressing the system of roads, first with stopgap, addressing the roads from the highest use for arterials, collectors, and then residential. So we want to attack, attack the roads to have the most traffic because those are the the public's most frequent interaction with, with that road is on, is on the arterials and collectors, and then go to the residential. And try to apply that as far as we can get. And slurry seal it, generally speaking, it could be a chip seal, it could be a microsurface, rapid set slurry, something like that, to extend that life another, you know, five to seven years and then repeat that cycle.
So the council, when they approve the expenditure of the $355,000, that, those expenditures already identified sections of roads that were going to be-
It identified, yeah, I think it was like, I want to say 50, it may have been more, candidate locations.
Right.
So we will evaluate those candidate locations and come up with a, areas that need to be addressed. And we'll probably mark out more than what can be addressed because if you get good bid prices, you want the contractor to keep, keep going until you fill that bucket. We don't want to stop them, you know, from filling that $300,000 budget. I mean, if prices come in under budget, then we would want them to do more work, not less. So it'll be a, a general square footage of three types of treatment, you know, structural digout, inlay perhaps, and then, you know, removal, replacement, cold patches.
So do we anticipate any of that work happening this summer or fall? With this allocation?
You know, my goal is to get a project that we can put out to bid September, October. It doesn't take a long time to do this and the prices for asphalt right now are pretty cost-effective, mostly cheaper, but they're cheaper than they have been in the, in the past, in the recent past. So to take advantage of that bid climate, I would like to do that, but then seeing how the road and traffic control is impacting town right now with the Caltrans project, there may be some coordination with, with that to make sure we're not completely destroying circulation in town.
So as I remembered, I thought a lot of the, the repairs are going to happen like on, in Greenhorn or, you know, that, the road going into Greenhorn, is that, that's what I remembered, the, the list of roads that were sort of being analyzed?
I apologize, I did not have that list of roads in mind.
It's okay, all right.
That was the one, that was the one that we approved in-
In June, right, 17? Yeah, okay. So whatever we-
Those, those were candidates because of their, their pavement condition.
Okay, yeah, okay. And so then the very next year, you go over and, well, you expend more dollars on that same section of road that you just spent?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's my recommendation, you guys can give me another recommendation, but I would recommend doing that so that we protect the investment into those streets.
Go ahead, is there any questions, Scott?
Yeah, I think the recommendation makes sense, it's logical, it's practical. Issue I have is six years ago, we got the study, and six years ago, I assume we were getting about $300,000 a year to put toward roads, and that hasn't been done. And so I'm, I'm wondering where this million eight was spent and why, you know, why we don't have more in the road funds? And if it was spent for vegetation control or for something else, does that mean now that if we apply the road funds appropriately from now on, that we're going to have to make that money somewhere else? Where do those road funds go over the last five, 10 years? And why, and can we get them back? Is my question, so that might be more of a finance question, I'm not sure and I'm not expecting answers to any, but perhaps when we bring this back in September, we have a more harmonious conversation and perhaps we can increase the budget with the, to get those down on the road.
And I do know a lot of it was spent on public works time for road maintenance.
I, I need to see the results.
Yeah, I can bring that back. I just know as part of the regular budget, they would put it in there.
Okay.
So it's, so it's just like enterprise fund? So we have these, these dollars, instead of charging those dollars to the general fund, they were charged to this categorical funded program?
So there were some, sometimes engineering charges, there was a lot of staff time for road maintenance that was charged to those and then materials and supplies were made.
And then purchase of equipment also.
Yeah, so I'd like to see a pretty detailed explanation of that so we can see- Yeah, so I'd like to see a pretty detailed explanation of that so we can see that the money was spent.
We can bring that back.
For the roads. And again, if it was spent for the roads, then this budget is out the door, out the window because we're already using that walk. The carried forward money in this, in this is $300,000, only one year's worth and we haven't really done any, we did Gardner Lane, but we haven't really done much this year. So we're going to have to answer some questions and be held accountable for what?
And in this budget, we allocated these dollars differently and that's part of the change. We allocate these dollars differently in this year's budget.
And that was all my complaint.
Set it aside for this project.
All my years on council, I've been, you know, frowning table on this. My complaint was that we have been administering these road funds away and not using them as they're intended.
I think with a, with a five-year plan though, like we do with our water, wastewater, at least we'll have a visual reminder of what we're supposed to be doing.
Yeah, as I said, this is, this plan is very practical, it's very practical. And going forward, it makes sense. But I think there's some back money. I'd like to see a little more, I'd like to see half a million a year. I'd like to see more money spent to fast track this. And if we have to go back and take it from reserves because we spent it improperly before, then I'd like to?
And we need to remember too, these funds, this 300, this is, still includes rollover from previous years. That's why the pot is a little bit larger. We're usually right around 100 to 150,000 in the RMRA funds. We have 355, so that includes some of that past money. We also have to remember, I can account for the last two years that I've been here. We bought a chip or crack sealer machine with these funds. And we also did Gardner Lane and that whole area with these funds. So that's in the last two years.
Was it also in the park, did it, some in the park, like speed bumps or?
Not out of this.
I don't think so, but I know there was, I want to say there was a pothole. There's been a couple of different potholes that arose too. And I'm stepping in the way back machine. But either way, we need to look at.
Sinkholes?
Yes, there was a couple, some big sinkholes that opened up a few times and I think money got shuffled into there because we had to, so like I said, I'm trying to remember, but yeah, we can.
Aaron?
Yes.
Are you curious, is there any like grant opportunities or external funding sources that are available for this project at all?
I'm not aware of any grant sources. SB1 money comes in for this purpose, SB1 RMRA, I think is what it's called. And that's an acronym.
Road maintenance and rehabilitation?
Thank you. I was fishing for that, yeah. So that's, that's what it's for. And again, in the past, the slurry, or that's a crack filling machine was bought a year or so ago. And that's a great machine that the current Public Works crew can use when, you know, shoulder seasons fall before the rain comes or spring before it gets too hot. And you can seal those roads. And if you keep the water out of your roads, that's, that's one of the best things you can do. Because once the water gets into the base, it starts pumping, you see the fines come up, it starts looking muddy, that's, you're losing fines, you're creating voids and that's going to start falling apart. So that was, I think, a good purchase.
So will any of your five-year project lists include crack sealing or is that going to be over and above this?
So crack sealing would typically go, the contract, that would be included in the contract before you apply a surface coat, a slurry or a micro surface or a rapid set, chip seal. You would do the crack filling ahead of time.
And that staff would probably do that, like we did on the?
It depends on schedule.
Okay.
They could do it, but then sometimes it makes sense to have the contractor go in there. They've got a machine and they can, they can do it very efficiently.
We have a machine too, right? We have, we have a machine so we can do it efficiently with staff. Maybe we need to hire a person who's an expert in that. Maybe that's something we can, is that, would that be a cost savings if we have someone just dedicated to using that machine?
Yeah, that's, that's, I want to give you a simple answer, but I'm, if you have another person, is that just what they're doing? Are you taking a person away from doing another job? I mean, if you hired one person just to do crack filling, they need a, it needs a driver of the equipment, you need a person, you know, it's like a train, it's a little train. You've got a truck with air compressor, they're going to blow out the holes, they've got to, if they're, if they're too wide, they need to grind them so that you can apply the crack sealing appropriately. And then sometimes it takes two coats and, you know, you have the guy driving the truck, you have the guy blowing the holes out and you have the guy applying and squeegeeing.
Right, so this has been an issue that's been in front of us for a long time. We have a machine, so now I'm kind of hearing that, well, it probably doesn't do us any good because we need extra people, we don't want to take away from here. So my question is, I'm trying to identify what the road block has been. If it's lack of personnel, then can we look to hire the personnel? If it's, you know, lack of training, can we get training? If it's, if we don't need the machines, it's just not feasible, then let's get rid of the machine.
So I would say the crack filling should be applied to roads throughout the city regardless of, if they're on any list.
I don't, but I don't think it's that. I don't, I don't think it's that. I think it's that it's the time to do it. You already have a staff that has things to do and then you've got to schedule in, hey, we're going to jump over to Bush Street, hey, we're going to jump over to here. And you still have to keep up on your daily work. And that's, that's where, I don't think.
So maybe that would proponent of adding staff?
Well, I mean, that's what you'd have to do. You'd have to hire, but you need, you'd have to add three guys for a summer. I'm just saying, if it's a summer job and you have time to do it, you have to have three staff, a guy to drive it, blow it out. I mean, every time I see crack sealing. I'm just saying, it's a bigger thing than this, than this one guy, you move your truck forward 10 feet, you fill the crack and squeegee. It's a bigger, but that's, that's a complication.
What was the plan when you got the machine? What was the, what was the plan?
To my knowledge, it was to black seal as often as we could.
Yeah, so our Public Works would do that as, when they could fit it in.
As time, as time, as time in.
When you fitted in, you would do small sections of the road. It took, it took my staff a week and a half to do all of Gardner and that surrounding area because I had to have traffic control. I had three guys run, pretty much to run the machine. So that was basically my whole Public Works staff working for a week and a half on nothing but that.
And Chris, we used the machine also at the park, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we did.
Before we didn't have that traffic control down there, so, you know, we still had guys to do other things. But that's the thing, you know, the machine, we have to fit that work in, in between our duties.
Go ahead.
No, I'm going to throw, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to keep throwing this out there. My only thing I want, I want to throw out for, for projects, there's been a gentleman, he lives on Bush Street, his name is Scott Rowitz. I know he's been in multiple times and I know you guys are working on it, but I just want to throw that back out there because he, he comes through and, and that's all. I just want to throw that out there, that Bush Street would be a wonderful one to fix up. That's all I got.
If the council wants Bush Street to be addressed, provide that direction.
I know, and that's, we can talk about this down the road. I'm just throwing that back out. I know this is a plan, this is a broad picture right now and we can get into the weeds down on that later. I'm just, yeah.
But as we look at a five-year plan, it's, it's good to have that input too.
Yes. And that, maybe if there's, you know, contractors right around the corner and it's easy, I'd be like you're saying, where the contractor's working in there, it's easier than, so I'm just saying, well, we need, I think this road thing is a much bigger picture too. I want to move forward with it, so I'm happy with this and I just want to, that's one little project I'll throw out there.
Karen, do you have any comments?
Yeah.
You know, Scott, any additional comments?
Nope.
Caroline?
No.
You know, again, before we open it up to the public, at least we're moving in a positive direction. And I appreciate your work and Chris's work on that. And we can figure out the details and the finances and where the money has been or gone or whatever we've done, but at least we're paying attention to it and acknowledging the fact that we need to do something to maintain our roads.
Oh, I did have something to say. It was about COG. Is there, there could be some funding from COG possibly that could get thinking?
Is it about the LTF funds?
Yes.
I think we do have some of those LTF funds.
Yeah, so just making sure that when we're at COG, that we're constantly fishing that LTF funding to come back to the city.
Any member from the public, if you would like to comment?
Yeah.
Go ahead, sir. Please state your name.
My name is Lance Grandcamp from Greenhorn Creek. I'm a pavement pounder. I go up and I walk every, almost every day and I walk on the streets. And we have a serious problem. Over, if this survey was done six years ago, I'll tell you, the roads are far worse, far worse. We have alligator ring, we have cracks two inches wide. This happens mainly on the main through fares. So we have Sulkirk Ranch Road and on Smith Flat Road, which we have a lot of heavy trucks, construction going on, lot of deliveries. So those roads are in really sad shape and I'm afraid that we're going to lose them. I don't see a $300,000 budget for the whole city is even, I think it's, you need millions. I think you need a $2 million budget maybe per year to get the roads up where they're not just going to fall apart. Because with all the cracks that there are now, when big trucks come through and there's water on the road, if it's raining, it pounds that down and it just crumbles. It's, the roads there were last slurry coated, I think 12 years ago, maybe 15 years ago. And it was kind of a poor job when they did at least. But that's all that's been done. Nothing has been done before. If you take a look at what Caltrans does on the highway, they go through and they got somebody filling in cracks like this and they move along pretty rapidly. At least that would be something to prevent it from further damage. And I think that was being discussed, but it's a, it's a big task. I'm talking about even the streets in front of our house have one-inch cracks about every 50 feet. One-inch cracks. Some of it where you get some water that's going down and it starts to cave in. You get little spots where the roads are caving in. So it's serious. I drive on some of the other streets in Angels Camp and I see some that are in good condition and some that are in real poor condition too. But I think that the city needs to do something more than $300,000 budget to, to at least get this up. I think right now a new survey needs to be done. You just, six years ago is, it's totally different. Six years ago, when the roads were more than bad, now they're terrible. And it's worse every year, every year ago, it's worse.
Thank you.
So that's my comment.
Anyone else? Wait, I didn't want to go to the line.
I'm sorry.
Anyone online? Tell them.
So I guess for Aaron, while you're up there, that was direction. I would give direction to please, please give us a cost for a new survey. Because we don't know that at the moment, correct? Unless you have one off the top of your head that would get us close or?
$50,000 is close. Let's go for it.
Out of that budget?
No.
Right.
We spent $50,000 then back into, or something like that back in 2019. At least let's get some bang for our buck. If they were good back then, let's at least start with those roads so that whatever survey we need later on, maybe is half the size, you know, something like that. I'm fine with that happens.
And I thought that you and Aaron drove the roads and visually inspected them. Has that happened yet?
We've looked at quite a few.
You've looked at quite a few of them.
We haven't marked anything out yet. That'll be, it's October 4th, I think, September, second week of September.
And as I remembered, and obviously you don't have that list, but I think a lot of the work that you were just referring to, it's going to happen along that main thoroughfare for going into?
Yeah, they have to be traveled roads. They could be elsewhere.
This one right here, Vallecito. This winter, it really deteriorated, I noticed. And it's a, it's a massive throw fare from everybody that comes down the hill that's going even towards Sonora. But it would be good to get eyes on, like Murphy's grade red, it's going to get torn up again.
Thank you, Aaron. So next month, you'll come back with a five-year plan for us? Is that the intention or some, something?
Five-year plan is a general idea of how we're just going to move. That's presented on the budget slide that was up there, the second slide. That's kind of, and then each year we would present what were the streets that we're going to apply treatment to. So in June of next year, June 17th of next year, you'd expect to see another agenda item where we would identify where the SB1 funds are going to be spent that year. Sort of like a general plan, which is what we have here, to a project on the ground that we approve in June.
Okay.
We're not going till June to get a project approved. That's not what we're hearing, right?
So, so in June, you guys approved the 25, 26 citywide pavement repair project. That project is being designed right now to be bid, to be implemented by next spring.
Okay.
So then next June, you would do the, have the same cycle. So we do the stopgap project and I'm suggesting we have a rapid set slurry the following year. And next year, it comes up, you know what? We would like to do something more intensive. We need to address these four failing streets. And if that's going to take all of our budget, we're going to do those five failing streets. And that's the direction that council gives? That's what we'll do. And then we'll, I'd probably come back next year and say, well, let's, let's catch up on that, slurry seal the following year. So we'll have opportunity to weigh in on those projects and see, you know, see what your desires are at that time.
Okay, I assumed it was going to be like our water, wastewater CIP projects. You know, we were going to see a list and then we could, we, you know, there was, and we spent the 10 million or whatever we allocated for those projects. And we prioritize that list. Could we do something like with roads so we, we know visually? Or my concern is, is that I, it feels like there's going to be lag time. You know, if, I'd like to know that, you know, this June, we allocated these funds. Next June, when the funds come around, unless something changes dramatically that you present, you're recommending that we do this project. So that, is that possible?
It is, and it is. I could, I could, I could give you a map of the stopgap where we intend to apply that. And sometimes you get wrapped around the axles with, hey, I know if prices are cheaper, we're going to do more area. If it's expensive, we're going to do less. But like I said, this is a plan. If I said, these are the streets that we're trying to apply this to graphically on, for the 25, 26 project, I could present that. And then the 26, 27 would look very similar from where I'm standing right now because I would say I want to slurry seal that. And then when we get to that point in time, again, the council has opportunity to weigh in and say, let's modify X, Y, or Z. Yeah, I could do that.
Aren't we ensuring, ensuring that this is, because it's a five-year plan, right? So we just, we just look every year to, of what's being done, but it's still sticking within a five-year plan? Does that make sense to them?
I'm, I'm, I'm doing math in my head here or thinking about your question. So if you have a rolling five-year plan, we could update this to, you know, 30, 31 at the bottom of it after we do this, it would be a rolling plan. Did that answer your question?
Were you asking about?
Yes, it's not a five-year, five-year plan. It's just an ongoing plan?
Yes, I think that's a better word. It's an ongoing plan, it's an ongoing effort. We're always trying to improve this.
So this plan right now is, is to spend the money we have and do as much as we can? Is that a, is it going to be as successful, based on your comment about Amador County does not have enough money, based on Mr. Ranky's comment about it's going to take more? Are we just spinning our wheels and spending this 300 grand and getting further and further behind every year? Or is this a way we're going to get caught up?
With the current funding, we can't get caught up. We're going to try to preserve the roads that are the best condition to last as long as we can.
So can we talk about adding funding from the general fund or from some other, finding some other source to make this a project that isn't just digging bigger holes?
Right, well, that's, that's us. And we would have to, you know, do some major cutting in other areas where we're not flush with cash.
Right, so 300,000 is a good start, we can get going, but I think it's, yeah, our government trying to figure out, going, how do we want to prioritize this differently and get more, get more money involved.
Right, and that's, so to improve the good roads, you have 30% of the roads are in good condition. To get them up to the very good condition, it's 1.2 to 2.7 million dollars to address that 38%. Of the 27% of your roads that are in poor, very poor condition, $7 million to improve all of those. So it is, I guess the one take home from this is, we don't have enough money. And that's, that, that's kind of the purpose of it, say, you know, we're going to do the best that we can, then we're going to try to objectively spend the money the best that we can. But without another source of money, it's, it's, we're not going to get on top of it.
So, so Aaron, if, when you guys do your study or if we, you know, and again, is it worth $50,000 to look at another one? And if you saw that crack sealing was, you know, the best bang for our buck, would you know, the best bang for our buck, would you come to us and go, hey, instead of doing this $350,000 on this, we're going to allocate that money and we're just going to crack seal?
That was a recommended project. Absolutely.
I mean, so I not that we've given direction, but you come to us and say, because it's going to it's going to preserve the asphalt, it's going to stop the water, you know, all of all of that, as opposed to slurry coating or whatever. We just invest the money for this year, we're going to crack seal.
That could that could be a conclusion.
Okay.
Because we can do the whole city versus
Right.
limited streets. That I that could be a solution. If you walk it, you study the whole network, you may have different recommendations.
Right, right. And I'm going to look to you to make those recommendations, but that could be one of them.
Absolutely.
It was I think it's clear next budget season, we have a serious discussion about how we want to prioritize our roads. We've increased sales tax on citizens a couple times in the, you know, in the very recent past. And we're spending money on other things like we have plenty of money and we're not, or just ignoring these roads. And the best thing we got so far is come up with a five-year plan and step goes further for buying the A-ball. So we definitely have some things that we need to discuss.
Well, we did measure A, and that was that's only towards fire.
That's only towards fire.
However, there is TOT that goes into fire and there's general fund that goes into fire. And so there's you can look at that, but then the PD also is pretty expensive and go look at that. And so it's, you know, there's just not a lot of money to play with. There's so there's hard decisions to make. I don't think there's a ton of slush fund. I mean, maybe there's going to be some hard decisions to make.
Absolutely.
Maybe we have that conversation.
Public safety and roads. I mean, that's what you're coming we're coming down to. That's they're both very expensive.
Roads are an essential service the city provides, though.
They're the most frequent experience that public has with a public service or a public asset. I mean, turn the water comes there, but you're driving every day, that a reminder that.
And I I think this plan that Chris and Aaron have come up with is is the best that they can do with the money they have available.
Absolutely.
At the moment, you know what I mean? And so I think they're giving us the best bang for the buck that we can get at the moment. I just don't know where else to pull the funds from. And I mean, we, I think we were both on the board together when we got the presentation. And, you know, I mean, we even back then it was like, what do we do? So I think it's a bigger question is a bigger topic. So.
On the traffic mitigation, does any of that money come to roads?
No, no.
We saw development now. Okay. But TOT it does.
So that's if I could make one nuanced clarification. So like traffic impact mitigation fees go to capital projects. Pavement maintenance is maintenance. It's different than the capital project. It's not it's not a function of new development or old development. It's maintaining existing assets. Where the water program, we're replacing a water system, that's a capital improvement program. It's nuanced, but there's a little bit difference. So this is a pavement management program. That's all referred to it, not a capital.
No, because we're trying to maintain. Not what we do.
Thank you.
I appreciate all the council's comments and and the community's comments. And obviously it is a concern. And we just have to keep our our pencils sharp and figure out the best direction to go. But it's better than not having a plan. And I've said that three times tonight during this presentation. So I I do appreciate the work and at least we're moving forward. May not be as rapid, but mainly may not be able to allocate as much money, but at least we're moving forward. And I I appreciate our attempts to do that. So with that, thank you. We're moving on to item G. Approved resolution number 25-64, thereby awarding a contract to Willan Financial Services and authorizing the city administrator to execute said contract, hiring a consultant to update the City of Angels traffic mitigation fees. This came about for the council members, that when we looked at our building fees, we thought, oh, my gosh, traffic mitigation and it's driving the price of building a new home. So and if you looked at the old study, it had a number of stoplights and I think, you know, sometimes we do pie in the sky and we pick all these projects that we think we want to do. And then when we ask a consultant to put a cost to that, like we did with our last traffic mitigation study, it drives the cost. So I'm excited about entering into this, but I want to remind staff that what we're looking is, you know, what is our current charge to build a home and can that fee be reduced? And we still can move forward in a positive direction and not get behind the A-ball like Scott mentioned with, you know, even though there are two different sort funding sources. So with that.
Mayor and council members, this is being done at council's direction based, as he said, on our review of traffic impact mitigation fees are higher than other jurisdictions. Most importantly, we have already pared down the list. Does that mean that that list is going to be what we use for this traffic impact mitigation fee? It means that's where we're going to start. It does not mean we cannot still remove projects from it after we get feedback. That is one of the reasons why we sent out the RFP on this project. Willan was chosen. This particular firm emphasizes things like options and being flexible and looking at alternatives, especially the fact that developers are not the only ones that pay for the roads. On capital improvements, you do have multiple sources of funding and it's based on boundary lane is an example. The developers are going to benefit from that. The public is going to benefit from that. Tourists are going to benefit from that. That means that when we actually establish the fee for that, it's going to be 40% development, 60% other sources. This particular firm will tell us the other sources. They will help us determine the percentages. Our city engineer will actually work with the actual cost. So it's sort of a people we already have by the city plus this outside consultant. In addition to that, they also talk about some options that I had never heard before. I've always had you have a build out and you just base it on build out and you guess what your growth rate is going to be. They will actually bring in a market-driven analysis to determine what's your market likely to have happen over the period that you set your fees for. As we learned, percentage growths don't always help us and we may be slowing down. Maybe it needs to look at an alternative way of calculating the fee. So I found that sort of very refreshing as well as reasonable expectations. So I think this is essential course to do. We are hiring a consultant to do the NEXIS studies for this. That's very important because if you're going to get sued, that's what you're going to get sued on is the NEXIS study you did for this. By that means is the amount that you're setting is have we drawn a clear line between this developer needs to pay this much because they're benefiting this much and because it's going to build these particular projects. And yes, they are going to use those roads. You have to go through all of those steps. We don't have somebody on staff who can do that and confidently say, and I've gone to court on these and I have successfully defended them. And that's why we are looking at hiring an outside consultant. That said, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. We did go through an RFP process. We did rank the top three. Two of them were very, very close. If you could go down just a little, you can see, sorry, other way. They're that table. It will show you how they came out. We actually had to go to calling references in order to break the tie. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do you know why that third consultant was so much more?
They are used to working with really large firms in Southern California and places like that and really large cities. They have worked with a few small ones. They also did not look closely at the RFP where we said our city engineer was already.
Since he didn't include the engineer.
And so they had a whole bunch of stuff about traffic studies. Well, COG is already doing a traffic study that we'll be using. We already have a city engineer who's already done that. We pointed those things out. Two of them caught that. One of them did not.
Any questions? No counsel?
No, I I have thought our efforts to do this. I think that when we set the traffic mitigation fee way back when and they were based on unrealistic traffic report. And I'm not sure. And I guess I would question, when you have a a report that says someday Angels Camp is going to have 13 traffic lights and all this parking, all this kind of stuff, and you and you base your mitigation fee on that, is there some kind of a statute that says you can't charge people now for what's going to happen 50 years from now or 30 years or 20?
So the standard is you set timeframes with your priorities. In other words, that's what we've done most recently and it had not been done before. We ranked from top to bottom and then we said, and these are likely to occur within the next 10 years for sure. These are going to occur 11 to 20 years. That is the current standard you use. And you look at those things that you realistically think you have a good chance of starting or finishing within the zero to 10-year timeframe. And I emphasize we're starting. You're not going to pay for everything within the 10-year timeframe. You're going to start banking a little of that for years 11 through 20. So you got to keep that in mind also.
And so 30 years is just no bill?
No, 30 years is your horizon for your list. It is not 50 years and everything you're ever going to build. We're not going to use the general plan list of streets for our traffic impact mitigation.
Okay. Okay. Well, I appreciate that because I know that wasn't done in passing. I think that's what led this.
I think it's.
So it was a so over the top.
Yes.
Thanks.
So 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 Amy, oh, Karen, did you want to? No, no, she's just listening. So Amy, we've collected what $1.6 million since the last study?
I just spent some of that on.
And just spent some of that on fundraising. Congratulations to all of us. But I mean, the reality is that that money people would assume is really the use for the construction. It could be just to to do a study that begins the process to put the road in, correct?
You have to first figure out where you want to put it. You have to figure out how wide you want it. You have to do the environmental study, P A E D, what's it called?
Project approval environmental document.
That that costs a really large amount of money before you ever put a shovel on the ground. And that has to be included in that.
Figure it out.
It's usually a big chunk of it. Yeah.
And so and Aaron and Amy and Chris, you guys have have looked at the the one that the project list for the first 10 years and we all agree that that's the priority of the roads. If this funding became available, we should?
We shoved everybody who is here in the room, department heads, fire police, administrators, city engineer, I was there, Chris was there, and we all talked about every project. We used little index cards. We ripped them off, threw them away, or kept them on the board and then ranked them. And yes.
And for the for the public certification, what was the thought process or philosophy behind choosing what roads would be in that first 10?
We we had three criteria, safety, economic development, and traffic circulation. What improves circulation, what was going to be good for safety evacuation, and what was going to be good for economic development. So we emphasized those three points.
Carol?
I think this is excellent. We need to get those fees down so we get more people building.
Carol? Did someone?
Karen said yeah.
Karen said yeah. So I guess to speak to that point, when the consultants start with this list of projects, are you guys going to be in control of and be mindful of what we want to see as a result of from this study?
Yes.
And you still understand public safety and all of that, but still be mindful of where we're going for trying to go with this?
Absolutely. In fact, they have some public outreach as a component of their process. So yeah, absolutely. And that's one of the reasons for this particular consultant is back and forth.
Okay.
I want to add, I think one of the one of the benefits of the proposal, the approach that Willan took was we had that opportunity. If we put in these 10 years of projects that we have prioritized and it comes out and says it needs to be $150,000 a house, then we got to say, no, that's not going to work, right? We're going to come to council. We had to we had to trim. This is what you guys thought we were going to do. We're going to trim this down to these two projects. And now we got something that we can actually, people can move forward with and build houses with and we can get one improvement fund perhaps. But we have that ability to interact with public, council to make that adjustment.
Thank you.
Any comments for the public? Anyone online?
No comments.
We need a motion to approve resolution 25-64.
So moved.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Discussion from the public? Anyone online? Hearing that, little call.
Pico?
Aye.
Chirado?
Aye.
Shabete?
Aye.
Star? And Olia?
Aye.
So moving on to item D. Introduce, waive the first reading by substitution of title, hold a public hearing and schedule September's. Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Thank you.
September 2, 2025, for a second reading of ordinance 550, thereby amending the City of Angels Municipal Code Section 17.09P, defining personal services 17.27.020. He has 17.27.025, 17.30.020, 17.30.025, 17.37.020, 17.37.020, and 1.17.080 public nuisance to make salons and spas a permitted use and establish standards for declaring odors a public nuisance when they affect adjacent land uses as measured at property boundary. Amy?
Sorry. Mayor and council members, as of 2022, salons and spas were a conditional use permit that have to go to a public hearing. So we changed it in 2022 to be an administrative in-house conditional use permit. So that if we notify people within 300 feet, we could still issue it in-house to expedite. Well, we decided we could take it one step further and make it a permitted use. After approximately a dozen of these, we never have anybody who opposed and said, gee, I'm worried about smells that might come through. We checked some other ordinances and saw that what they did was they basically took odors as a public nuisance and handled it that way. And so that's what we are doing here. And we are redefining salons and making it really clear that there are all different types of personal services. And basically, the idea is to streamline the process, make it a permitted use, and only regulate it if it becomes a public nuisance. Planning Commission considered this June 12th and you can have less late recommended approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
What question?
You know, my question is regarding the odors. I read it in here somewhere. I'm trying to go around finding. But it's not really a subjective thing, right? It's a measurable, objective thing?
Yes. So I was surprised to find out there was a way to measure it.
And how do you guys, how do you enforce that? How open up the can worms of this ordinance?
It's a dollar.
Oh, no.
Dollar.
A dollar.
That was what I was worried about, that they actually use a chemical way of measuring the amount of a certain chemical versus parts of air. And that actually can be done. And you can measure that at a property line. And so there is an objective standard.
So if we receive a complaint, we go out there and we measure it? Is that an expensive thing to do? Is that a what's that look like?
So what it looks like, we had some debates about this with our code enforcement officer. The idea is to try to have them mitigated by improving airflow and air air purifiers, blah, 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 first, ventilation, ventilating. That's going to be the objective bottom line. Two, if we have to have it measured, I'll be honest with you. I don't know of anybody who's ever had to have it done.
I think you measured parts per million with this text or something. It measures how many that it I had the same question. It's like, how do you measure this? So either way.
I think it's a lot like you do road and pavement management. It's a little bit, it's very more scientific. You can actually, you should be able to measure air. Have you had the experience with that? Well, then, yeah. I like it.
I do too. I do too. And I appreciate it. It makes it it makes it. It makes it easier for a business owner to start a new business.
Because our number one conditional use permit has been salons. One or two person salons. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Good, the open is public and let's move on.
Kara? Okay, so we're going to, we've filed our first reading and we'll come back. Oh, a public hearing. I have to open a public hearing. I apologize. It's an opportunity for the public to voice an opinion regarding this ordinance change. Does any member of the public? Anybody online?
Somebody with questions online.
Good, so we will close the public hearing, bring it back. And no action is required. This was the first reading and we're going to bring it back in September, correct? Okay. Amy must be the next one to you. Okay, moving on to item F. Adopt resolution number 25 dash 55, thereby approving an expenditure of up to $28,000 to purchase and install two hydration station drinking fountains at Utica Park. Amy, this is an update from our last meeting?
This is, we were able to find, we were able to save $17,000 by going with a different company that does do the anti-freeze ones. There are two options that meet the standards that our grant requires us to meet. There's a resin one and there's a metal one. The metal steel ones will last longer. The resin ones will, are slightly less expensive, but will not last as long. So staff is recommending that you go with the anti-abrasive stainless steel. When I say slightly, 1,200 versus 3849. 6776 is what it would cost for those. We are guests, the $20,000 installation cost could be significantly less. We're pretty confident it would not be more. We did include an in-the-wall option if you really, really, really want us to pursue that. We feel that it gives us more flexibility to make it freestanding. When you compare having to do a pad for freestanding versus breaking a wall and having to mess with plumbing in an existing building, we anticipate that's about the problem.
Well, the path of travel up to the wall would have to be ADA compliant. So that may mean you have to pour more additional concrete and a pad so that they can.
And because there's already concrete around most of those buildings in order to get the drain, you'd have to dig up some of that concrete that's already there to do it as opposed to pouring something.
And has staff looked at the path of travel for a wheelchair?
Yes.
For these, for freestanding?
Well, those are the two things we're going to do first with the consultant or with the person who would be putting them in. We're going to say, here's our water line, here's our sewer line. Where's the easiest place for you to put them in at the least cost?
And that they're ADA compliant?
Yeah.
And they have accessibility?
ADA and closest to our water and wastewater. It's got to have, be close enough to both.
Amy, this might be a silly question, but why do we need the drain? Because it's not like gray water, it can't just.
It is, yeah, Chris will answer that for you. But basically, the gray water has to go to the sewer.
Yeah, gray water cannot just be ran out of and drank. They're not, they're asked to be captured.
Could you hear that?
Why is this gray water?
Yeah.
Because it's fresh water that comes in and then you drink it and then it becomes contaminated. But you're drunk.
I'm just curious, because I've seen sprinkler systems that we use all over, those are all used with gray water. So I'm just kind of curious to.
Catch trace.
Why we need to put the drains in.
Right, so.
Pardon?
Go ahead, Chris.
While you were talking about Green Horn Creek uses reclaimed water, they have to actually have a permit from the state that allows that. We're not going to go out and get a permit for a couple of drinking fountains that, you know.
Just treat the water. But that water is treated too, though, isn't it? The one on Green Horn Creek?
Yeah, it's reclaimed water.
Yeah, it's reclaimed, yeah.
I wish you'd just water a tree where they care, it's like the easy.
On the bright side, the state of California did waive one requirement. We had said we were going to make them covered, but because we are proposing stainless steel, which would last longer, they have waived that requirement, so that reduces the cost. But so we do have to have a filling, a bottle fill, had at least one pound. And that's what the option you're recommending does.
Scott?
The price looks a lot better.
The price does look better and I sure hope that the $10,000 a piece to install is something that can be adjusted. That sounds crazy to me.
It's all going to center on. How much sand did we have to? And the cost of supplies for line to go both to water line and to the sewer.
So obviously, around the bathrooms and around the kitchen would be the best location for these fountains.
And we had predetermined those two locations as the best locations with Boyer. And we're hoping that those are still viable. And that's why Boyer put in conduit underneath so many of the.
Okay. Any other public comment? Almost, here it comes.
It's just, Veronica told me, Angels Camp. In regards to the design, unfortunately, with that arm out there, how solid is that? Because I'm just thinking of the lovely vandalism. So that, you know, the arm that brings it out.
It's for the ADA.
Yeah, it's for ADA, yeah. So we don't actually have an option.
So, oh, no, no, I want it to be there. Just wondering, is it, how sturdy is it? A single part like, or is it welded on or taken out?
It.
I don't know.
I have to look really closely.
I think our really nice round tables are already getting beat up.
I suppose it's welded on.
Hey, public.
It's welded on, but not public.
Our people.
We'll soon find out after what it is.
Just wondering.
I can't ask privately.
Any other public comment? Michelle, anyone online?
28.
No comment online.
No comment online?
It was 45,000 in the last meeting.
Yeah.
Are they giving green?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
She had the picture.
That's how the pictures are up here.
And stainless steel.
And stainless steel. That's our recommendation. We can certainly go with potty colored rest.
No.
Motion to approve?
I will make a motion to approve.
Motion.
Oh, look at you go. Which one do you want, though? You want the green?
I want the first, Alvin.
Do you want the green one?
I want the green, yeah.
I'll second.
I want the green.
I'll second your green.
That's a green stainless steel, correct?
Yes.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion from council? Any discussion from the public?
No.
Hearing that, roll call.
Beetho.
Aye.
Sharato.
Aye.
Shabente.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Rolia.
Aye.
Thank you, Amy, for your work on this.
And.
Thank you, Amy, that was challenging.
I will.
Okay. All right, item H. I'm sorry, what?
Nothing, we're good.
We're on H, right? Because.
Yes.
Item H. Discuss proposals submitted by City Gate Associates provide direction to staff pertaining to the revisiting of the 2023 City of Angels Strategic Plan and Goal Setting document.
During the most recent regular meetings that we had or worked for the last fiscal year up to this fiscal year, city council directed staff to reach out to city and associates. They were the consulting firm that the city secured to work on the City of Angels Strategic Plan and Goal Setting. And the goal of that is to accomplish the following. It's for the city to revisit the strategic plans and goals, visit the mayhem of cities now compared to 2023. For the city to update the strategic plans and goals, which would include but not be limited to analyzing metrics, goals and recommendations as previously outlined in 2023. For the city to continue learning and progressing from this process, which would lead to the accomplishment of established goals. And then last but not the least, for the city to promote ownership, engagement, and accountability throughout the entire organization. I just wanted to point out that consultant Andy Green is online to answer any questions. And pretty much there are four, there are two options. Actually, the first one, which the council at one point last time was pointing towards is to revisit and update the strategic plans and goals. The amount for that was 31,005. And the other option, which is the full-blown strategic plan implementation study, that is 53,150. And that's basically starting the process from the beginning. And then a couple of add-on options will be the professional performance coaching. And that amount of money depends on the number of hours and consulting staff facilitating those sessions. And then last but not the least, since the city has been putting on to promoting itself and promoting the good work that we've been doing, they have a proprietary product called Audmon, which also depends on the number of hours and consulting staff facilitating that service. That's a additional service, which is a podcast type audio summary uses the social media tool to increase community awareness and engagement regarding the city's strategic planning goals. So that along with the city website. I've asked Mr. Green about the fact that ideally, you're supposed to be doing strategic revisiting once a year. And this is 2023, and I've asked Mr. Green if that is going to be an issue, which would warrant a full strategic study. He said, it won't. Like, you know, there's a couple of things to catch up on, but it won't trigger a full-blown necessity to do a full plan. So Andy, would you like to share something, please?
Yes, I can, thank you, I appreciate it. Members of council, members of the public, again, Andy Green on the record with City Gate. Glad to attend. Pardon my voice, I'm fighting off a cold here, so I may sound a little nasal. I apologize for that. But as Pam pointed out, what she and I had talked about was what the process should be to kind of get the council caught up to date from what she understood what the council wanted. And so my recommendation, or our recommendation, would be to revisit the 20 top tier or top goals that you established with your strategic plan that originally, the recommendation from City Gate and the original plan was to have those completed within a year. As Pam points out, it's been a couple of years, but you've gone through some changes, some other things that I think that looking at that, those top 20 would probably still be relevant. As a matter of fact, your discussion that you had just prior to this particular item about streets and roads is one of your top 20 priorities. And so I think it's, those top 20 would still be relevant to find out where you are, what you're doing, what changes should be made as far as potential metrics and items to, asset items, to make sure that those things are accomplished. That's what this particular mid-range update will provide. And so I think it would be useful to go with that route. As Pam pointed out, you did, she did ask what the cost would be for entire strategic planning process, which would include additional or new employee and public surveys and some extensive onsite meetings with individuals and the like. And as she pointed out, that cost is a little over 50,000. So, but I think that in terms of what I'm understanding through Pam, the, looking at this interim update would be what you need. At least you get started and then you can see what you want to do from there.
Thank you, Mr. Green. I'll start off. No offense, please, but I believe that we could use those dollars in a different way. And I believe we have the expertise here with city council. Alvin and Caroline, you were a part of the first. Michelle was part of the first. Staff was. You know, I would suggest that we take sections of our strategic plan or the 20 goals, do a study session, and start to think about what we have accomplished. And then, you know, and then set forth an agenda item to talk about what our next steps would be. So that, I'm starting there, that I think we could do it internally.
Andy, when we worked with you in 2023, with that, we did like the whole strategic planning contract. Was there any part of that contract where we would revisit that with you instead of opening up a new contract with you?
Good question.
The only part that was part of that particular contract was a kind of a verbal, if you, how are you doing type bouncing questions off City Gate. We did offer that. But nothing, nothing as formal as this as far as coming back and doing any formal analysis.
Okay. Yeah, because when we set the goals, we set, you know, what the goal was and then like what year and what quarter we planned to have all of that completed or executed. And this not having gone back for over like two years now is, I feel like we're just kind of floating out in no man's land. I don't really know. Maybe you guys, staff has been keeping track of where we've been. But I don't know that we've been updated on that.
I don't think we've been.
So, I appreciate all this. I feel like what we might need to do, Andy first, is come together with maybe the planning commission, department heads and us and kind of go through that as an exercise, like where are we? And then decide maybe from there, do we need additional consulting help? Because you guys have been instrumental in the success of this city since, what, 2017? I think was the first time I saw you guys. Yeah, so you were there too, Alvin. And so I really, I mean, the city has taken, you've seen the evolution of the city, Andy.
Yes, indeed.
Where we've come from there. And so it is instrumental and it's a, what you did for the city and what, you know, up to now has been key in our success. And I appreciate that. And so I don't, I don't want to diminish that at all. But I feel like maybe what we need to do is come back together as a, as a large group, kind of go over that and then see where the holes are and then decide if we feel like the next step would be coming, coming back into this, maybe revisit and update with you guys. Does that make sense?
It makes perfect sense.
That's great, yeah.
Yeah. I'll run more again.
And if I could just quickly do a response, you know, the purpose of City Gate, what we pride ourselves on is being a partnership with our agencies, whoever we're working with. We're not this high pressure, you need to do it, we have all the answers and without us you die type thing. That's not our philosophy. So we are here to help you. So if you want to kind of step back and take a look at it internally and see what you want to do, that was the whole purpose that Pam had requested our proposals, for you to do just that.
Okay, great.
So we're fine, we'll wait and totally content to see what you come up with. And when you, once you come back to us with whatever you think you might want, if we can help, we will, we will be there for you.
Great, and it's nice to have this in our toolbox to know as we go through that process that, that this could be a possibility. So I appreciate that.
And then we could scale, maybe scale back the proposal and then you could give us another proposal based on what our actual needs are after we take a look at it.
Okay, great.
Right?
Yeah, yes.
All right, I guess I'll go. My name, Andy, this is Alvin. Yeah, I know it's a lot of money to spend. But as for me, back in 2017, I think actually 18 is when, it was 18. I want to say it was like 60 grand at that time. I mean, we spent a chunk of change on it. All I know is that I think that set us up to be where we're at now. You know, it was a big ask, it was a big spend, but it gave direction on sales tax, on how we did our water and sewer rate increase, on technology and how we needed to update that. We didn't have a whole lot of reserve accounts at that time. And we, I mean, from where, from where I'm sitting and where we're at now, we didn't have any reserve. Now we have a couple million dollars in reserves. So I'm just saying, I think the 30,000 would probably be money well spent. That's my opinion on it. It would definitely, and you guys are a third-party objective on your own, you know, you have no vested interest other than to help us in our path. And I do believe you guys line that path out for us and then it's up to us to keep on that path. So I would be up to spending a little bit of cash on this. I guess if it's not today, because that's the feeling I'm getting from other council members. I am definitely into looking at this.
Well, there's ARPA funds too, like we were looking at ARPA money, which is.
Right, and then maybe on, you know, you got to look at. Right. And then maybe on, you know, you got to look at PD and spend money there, the road report that just got done. I mean, it definitely gives direction on where we need to go and how to fund it and how to do it. And that's my own take on it from the couple of times we've used you, and you've been wonderful. So my vote would be to go for this at the moment, but I don't think we're doing that at this time. But I would love to work with you in the future, Andy.
But I don't, I don't think the council, you know, based on what Caroline just shared, is opposed to expending dollars. But I think it'd be good for us to take a look at it and be good to be with it again.
I'm good.
And do that. So I do hear what you're saying, and I do appreciate that.
And if we need help on like that deep dive on the budget, on like how to figure some of the stuff out and balancing everything, that we should lean into them. But we don't know that till we get together.
That's fine. I'm good.
I like Caroline's idea, because I think, I think it'd be nice to see what the plan was, what's been accomplished, what still needs to be accomplished, and then kind of see if it's from there, if it's a start over or keep going. I think I like her idea, just getting together first and then deciding.
Okay.
Okay. Any public comment? Anyone online?
No comment online.
So at some point, we will schedule a board study session?
Yeah, so are we going to do a special?
So I'd love to have that, get to that calendar to have, where we can have department heads, planning commission, and city council. It's open to the public, obviously, too. And then maybe we do, that's a study session, half-day.
And talk about, and maybe just talk about what's, do we want to do it section by section?
Yeah, like revisit the whole plan, see where we've hit the goals, where we still are lacking, how far are we lacking behind? And like kind of go through and then talk a little bit about what we are looking to do over the next twelve to twenty-four months.
Yeah, I would look, I would love to look at the two thousand eighteen study, the twenty-twenty-three. I'd love to hear what Amy has to say at the moment.
Would you like consultants involved in that?
Yes.
Yes, probably, yes.
Do we have electronic copies of the strategic plan?
We do.
I think we do.
Okay, so you could distribute those? Do we want to wait till next meeting?
Has someone been tracking all of that?
No. No. I think not since we're back in this lab.
Okay, so that's.
Remember, Eadie's had a big whiteboard thing, and we kind of checked that. And things that, and things that rolled across, like when Amy, I'm just, I'm trying to remember, too. Things that fit into the bucket, that were, that was a goal, then we could kick that in there.
Yeah.
We have budget time. We will point to certain things that are in the budget that match back to that, but that's sort of the extent. And I know on your staff reports, you don't add things.
I thought we were required to.
Yeah, with the strategic address.
So most of those strategic plan goals, policies, came directly out of the general plan, which is what we implement in community development. So a lot of those, a few of those, we did check off the list.
If I could point out one quickly, just a point of advice, maybe, is again, the problems that I'm sure that most of you are aware of with strategic plans is just what happened unfortunately to Angels Camp at this point in time. It kind of, it was there for a while, it was driven for a while, and then you had a lot of changes that were kind of unexpected, both staff and council, from what I understand. So one thing that I would encourage you to do as you're sending this plan to go forward to review is really set that as a top priority, so it doesn't, you know, be subset by something else and then put on a shelf somewhere, and then you're, you're five years from now thinking, you know, what happened. So just, just a bit of advice.
Yeah.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you, Andy. Any other comments? So we do need to select some dates for a study session and get copies of the strategic plan to our store review. I think we're going to be pleasantly surprised about how many things that we can check off.
Yep.
I do believe, but I think it's a good starting point, what you suggested. And then we can move forward to see if we need to expend any dollars. I agree with that. So moving on to item J.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you, Andy.
All right. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Mr. Green, can we take a two-minute really quick? Are we allowed to do that?
Yes.
Sure. We will take a break. It is at eight seventeen. We will come back at eight thirty.
Yes. Oh, yes, sir.
I remember him.
Is the strategic plan on the Angels Camp?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah. And if you look at each of our, like, each of our agenda items, it says like where it falls under the strategic plan. So we have kept that alive, which is good. So when we go back and need to fill all that in, some of it's going to correlate pretty easily.
Yeah, like, so the interment of the budget, we do point out areas of strategic plan.
Yes, yeah. So it's there, we just need to know.
Well, I mean, I think like with you there, or Chris, or John, or Scott, I mean, any area that was addressed, I know there were some suggestions about finances and, and things. And I'm sure those have been implemented.
And a new accounting software.
Right, and a new accounting software and things. So I think it'd be good just for us to, to look at it first.
Would you be offended if we left now?
No, please.
Feel free to leave at any time.
I just want to make sure that I get some future agenda items.
Oh, you want to get to future agenda items? Well, then that's almost the end of the meeting.
What would you like to?
I just want to make sure that, that the.
Oh, for the Christmas party.
We will give direction to staff to do that. It'll be on our next agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, staff, was he, for that? We just can't, during public comment, we can't say anything.
What time of the week are you?
Start at five.
On five, okay.
December fifth?
December sixth.
Sixth, seventh.
Oh, he's got Bunchy that night.
Well, the fifth is my birthday.
Oh, bless your heart.
Nice, thank you.
I know you didn't.
I'd have counseled you, Michael, too.
Where'd you eat?
We're at David's Hart.
Yeah.
I remember Mr. Green in twenty-eighteen.
That's like, can we get along so well?
I remember him from twenty-eighteen.
Andy?
He ran, when he ran in twenty-two, was it? Twenty-three?
I wasn't in that.
He ran for council, didn't he?
No, Andy Green, the gentleman from Citygate.
I thought you were talking about the gentleman that was.
No, no.
Oh, no, he did, yeah.
I always remember his Christmas sweater.
Yes, exactly, yeah, yeah.
You're right. I completely forgot.
No, he did run.
We can all walk with Christmas sweaters on.
I thought, I'm sorry, I thought, no, Andy. Yes, he was a big part of Citygate actually.
Yeah, he was in twenty-two.
Physically, he was very.
Andy's got one of those really good voices.
Yes, he does.
One more regular item. Yeah.
Greg.
Greg, that's Greg Smith.
Yeah.
Oh, this gentleman right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was Greg Smith.
Yeah.
And he ran for council.
He did.
Yeah, a couple years back.
He always wore the great Christmas sweaters.
Oh, he did?
Yeah.
With the cap wings.
Oh, that's right, he did. And they had like a giant sweater once, and then he was like, he's a really, yeah, and the themed sweaters. Well, his wife is really into Christmas.
Oh, nice.
Her house is like, yeah, decked out. From what I understand, I haven't seen it personally.
That's fun.
Yeah. Yeah, we're waiting for.
As long as Kara, whenever Kara's back.
Here's Amy. It's like Kara's coming back there.
No chewing.
I know. What are you eating, dinner?
Yeah.
Unless you can share it.
Thanks for sharing.
Can't hear you.
You're muted.
You're muted.
You're muted.
You're muted.
She probably can't hear us either, but.
You're muted.
That's the Teams, Teams mute you.
Yeah, I'm hearing. I literally ran straight from the college to here, so I'm like, bah! So yes, I've not eaten all day.
When's your my time?
That's after.
I know, right? They didn't offer that at the college. They didn't even offer water.
To the parents. All right, it's eight twenty-two, and Angels Camp City Council meeting is reconvening, and we are item on item J. Continue discussion on options pertaining to the selection of a voting delegate and alternate for the League of City, League of California Cities Annual Conference and provide direction to staff.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During the last, our last regular meeting, council had requested for staff to table this for now and then to bring it back today. It has to do with the twenty-twenty-five League of California Cities Annual Conference. We're in every year. What happens is all cities are invited to come. And when it comes to elected officials, a city would delegate a voting member and an alternate. There, for the criteria, you can have until two alternates, but based on the feedback that I'm hearing last time, there are a couple of options to do this. One is to delegate a voting, a voting member. And two, the other one is to have one voting delegate and one alternate. The other one is to just have one voting delegate, and the other one is to have no delegates.
Well, we may end up with no delegates.
Well, so I, I didn't know what my schedule was like, but I'll report out. I just went to San Diego. I'm going to Texas for work this next week. In October, I have another. In November, I'm taking a family trip. And if I put one more thing on my plate, my wife will scalp me.
Yeah.
So I, I just, I cannot put another thing on my plate. I would love to, and if I remember, you guys had things going at that time.
I put a vacation in there, so I'm not around, I can't.
Yeah, I have two to three other work things and others. I just wish I could. And it is an amazing, I will, Kara, I will throw out, you need to go to one. It is, it is, it is very educational. There's a lot of classes. Do you want to learn about purrs? Go to that class. That'll blow your mind.
There's another one, though, I think, in spring. Is that right?
I think they alternate from.
It does sound nice.
During January, what happens is, what I would be humbly recommending to council member Scott is that in January, they have a, League of California Cities also handles a seminar for new mayors and new elected officials. So council member Scott will be a very, like, there'll be a very good opportunity for her to attend.
Yeah. And I, and I would say staff go and everything. I mean, there, there's a lot of information there. There's a lot of contacts that are there. There's a lot of vendors that are there. There's, if, if somebody has the opportunity to go, I think, for staff, whoever, anybody should be able to go, and I think it's pretty educational. So there's my two cents. That's all I got. Because at this moment, we're zero delegates.
January sounds easier.
Yeah, and it does alternate. Kara, like, it goes from Long Beach, then to Sacramento or Monterey.
Right, it gets northern, southern.
And it's really much easier when it's in Sacramento, so, which I think that the January one is. So we'll have to just look at it.
Okay.
So we're zero delegates, right?
We're at zero delegates.
We're zero delegates.
Okay.
Item ten, informational items. Pam.
I was going to bring firecrackers for this item, but I was afraid Scott might, you know.
Get a little jumpy?
Oh, informational item has to do with the Foundry Lane certification.
Yes.
Yes.
So I will hand that over to our city planner.
Oh, doesn't need to. Yay, we're certified. We're decertified.
Decertified.
The monies have been sent to Caltrans, and two weeks from now, the deed should be recorded. And we're.
We're done. That's very exciting. Congrats to all those involved, because this has been like a ten-year.
Twenty-one, twenty-five.
So that's nineteen eighty-nine.
Wow.
Access upstate for the, yeah, sort of twentieth, so yeah, nineteen eighty-nine. And all I know is, it was a pretty awesome moment to pass. And it was, and, and also, well, I had my little slip ready to throw it out, but. So either way, it was, it's pretty impressive. And if you think we have a long meeting.
Oh, God.
This thing was two days.
Wow.
Two days of meetings and.
How often do they meet?
Every other month.
Okay.
Like, they've been to Versed, they, they move all over the state.
So you don't know where you're going to have to go if you're on the agenda.
Right, so it's every other month. There was a lot of interesting stuff. Either way, I'll report out right now, I guess, what the heck. Like, the Olympics are there in twenty-twenty-eight. They're expecting to have to move in a month period, the week prior, the two weeks, and the week after. Like fifteen million people, extra people. They need three billion, they need three billion dollars to complete the projects. They only have two hundred million. There's shortfall of somebody, and some of these, you think we have, exactly, you think we have shortfalls, so.
That's just Caltrans.
That's just mobility. Yes, that is mobility of people. They need twenty-seven hundred buses. So I will throw it out in the state of California. If anybody has a bus, they can loan for a month, because they want entities to loan them buses if they don't have to go buy buses. So anybody from Texas to New York, if they're.
I don't think they're loaning them. I think they're probably renting them.
They're renting them, exactly. So, I don't know, but it's crazy, and, and some of these, either way. It was, there was a lot of information and a lot of really interesting stuff, too. I would like to say thank you to CTC for doing that. That was an amazing thing. And also, the county has now.
Was COG able to call in for that?
So we got COG passed also.
Very great.
So COG also did, so now that is not Calabasas County. That is actually the Department of Transportation that's on that funding or going to do the project leadership on the wagon trail.
Thank you for doing that. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, it was, I had a great time. So it was good.
Some next steps for Foundry Lane then, Amy?
Build it.
Yeah.
And they will come. And they will come.
We, in order to start this process, we had to have an application for phase two of the shopping center, which we've been sitting on for the two and a half years it took to get decertified. So it now becomes active again.
Oh, cool.
That's great.
So we might see some new construction out there in the near future. Cool?
So there's my update. Thank you. Congratulations to everybody. It's awesome. I mean, that, long time in the company.
I called every other previous planner that had ever been in this position to let them know, and they were like, let us know.
Well, how many has that been? Not that many.
Dave Hannan, Kay Simonson, yeah. There were.
Was Tim Sheeran involved back in the day?
Which, yes, yes, he was.
Okay.
He was one that said, just go ahead and do it.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah, and then sort of destroyed our relationship with Caltrans for several years.
Oh, I got you.
And it was, and Pam talked to commissioners, I talked to a couple commissioners. It was, it was a good meet and greet, too, and it was, it was, I think it was well worth the trip.
Was it well-attended?
Oh, yeah, that room was packed. Yeah, I mean, and it, there's not two hundred people, but there's, it was on both sides, in the back. There was a hundred people in there, and it gets, plus wherever it was virtual.
Before or after the photo ops?
What's that?
Before or after the photo ops?
Uh, before and after. There was other people that filled in. And apparently, you guys could see us.
We could see them, yes.
Yeah, in my gray suit.
Are you guys wearing gray? Are you at the end of the?
So, all right.
Any other information?
I think fashion items before consent.
Yeah.
That was the point.
A question online.
Yeah, we have our question online.
Okay.
You can unmute yourself.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you talked to the property owners about this road going through?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
We should have asked him, we should have asked him to state his name. Do we know who it is?
Huh? Can you state your name for the record, please?
For the record, please.
Yes, I'm one of the owners, Tim Sheen.
Oh, Tim Sheen. Thank you.
Yeah, that's the other side that we're still working on.
Sort of a big side.
Yes. We should be able to get back to your agents fairly soon.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
Any other, any other informational items?
No, and.
Okay, then moving on to item eleven, administration report.
Aside from submitting our July twenty twenty-five monthly report and back to highlight the cost savings that Public Works Crew had done on the.
Good night, Amy.
Thank you, Amy.
The PRD project and the decertification we just recently obtained. More good things to come for Angels Camp. So that's all I can say right now.
So one of the projects that isn't listed, have we started the Purdy Lane project?
I don't believe it's started yet.
Contract's been let, though.
The contracts, yeah. I think you guys move forward with the contract.
Yeah, nearage or whatever.
Yeah, nearage, right.
So it should be starting up here pretty soon. I think they're just wrapping up marketing.
They're almost, okay, then they'll move over.
Okay.
Any other questions regarding report? Scott, Kara, any questions?
Yep.
Council reports. Scott?
Uh, yeah, we attended LAFCO last night.
You did?
It was a long meeting, but it was, it was productive. We are, we interviewed the final two candidates for the new technical worker job, and we chose one to go ahead and negotiate with further. We also, they did an MSR on Angels Camp, and actually, it was, it was, I was pretty impressed. They, they were impressed by the city when they did. They said Angels Camp's got stuck in a row, and so staff was very, very helpful, and it was, it was a positive, a positive thing. They also did an MSR for the Veterans Districts, and Angels Camp Veterans District was kind of, was held up to be the, probably the most profitable or the most beneficial district, and so we're proud of that as well. We nominated Tony Terrell to be, for the Outstanding Commissioner Award. We considered down south in October, I think he is. And I think that's pretty much it.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Yeah.
I think so, too. Caroline?
We, Scott and I attended COG after the last council meeting, and there wasn't a whole lot going on there, but for Calabasas Connect, their ridership is, continues to go up, which is great. Their fare box is really well attended, and I think mostly because they're picking up all the Calabasas High students.
Yes.
And, and they're filling that need of not having buses. And so they've really adapted to that, and their ridership continues to grow because of that, which is great. But also just overall, in general, their dialer write is really well.
Good job, Mary.
Yeah, and then we did decide on, like, some big components of what the new transit facility design will look like. And so those decisions were made, and they're moving forward on that, so all is good.
When's construction expected to begin?
Next year.
Next year?
Yeah.
It's great.
Yeah. So there was just some changes that they had to make with, like, water tank, like, water holding and generators and that kind of stuff. And so, but I think that it's just down to the final, final step, so, yeah.
Alvin?
I gave my verbal report on the, on the trip down south, but I would like to thank Caltrans for the work being done out here. I, the only question I've had out of the public, everybody's actually pretty excited for it. It's, it's a little bit of a headache, but the only questions I've had, as long as we're keeping in mind, if we could put in water pipe or sewer pipe or anything that ties in with any future projects, while it's open, drop it in. So, but I would like to thank Caltrans and everybody, and you, for meeting out there this first day of school, knowing you went out. And then I'd also just, George Reed, I don't even know who the young man was, but I did see this young man with the sidewalk tore up, help a lady cross the street. So good work on having a good employee. And pass that, that's all I have.
On that note about if the road's open, in fact, I talked to the mayor about this, was that we have that project over by Habitat for Humanity. I was like, if they're going to be tearing up the road, is it worthwhile to move that on the timeline in front of Tractor Supply?
So I asked Chris that question, and Chris thinks that when they, when they do the roundabout, both at Francis and on the corner, they're going to, they're going to do those sidewalks all the way down to Tractor Supply. So that's a.
So that's not till twenty twenty?
That's a different, right, that's a different.
Okay, for some reason, I thought they were taking sidewalks all the way down to Capello. That's not part of this.
Not yet.
This, this round is just going to the shopping center.
Yeah.
Kara, anything to report?
No, I'm not on anything yet.
Well, shit.
LAFCO's got your name all over it.
Okay, I mean, I can report on the weather, Hawaiian, and volcano coming, but that's about it.
We do need to talk about committees, so.
We've got to get it agendized.
But we need to get it agendized, yes. Next meeting. Okay, great.
So I will, I will report. I've been spending a, a good amount of time talking with Troy, the project engineer from Caltrans. I was out there the first day of school. I appreciated Scott and is sending an officer to the corner. Since then, Caltrans has changed the timing on the lights for, for both the start of school and the dismissal of school. And a lot of what I hear all the time is, the lights aren't synchronized so that, you know, if you're going down forty-nine both ways, those lights, the traffic signal itself, if you're making a left-hand turn, that stays left-hand turn as long as that light is green, going towards Save Mart, and it's the same coming back. The left-hand, the left-hand turn into the mechanic's bank stays green, so people, it doesn't stop, it won't impede the flow of traffic. I, too, Monday was working at Helping Hands across from the Catholic Church. They were potholing, and the crews were helping folks load groceries, helping them across the street, and I did share that with Troy. So, and I think Troy has some things in mind as a project engineer to help speed this project along. One of the things he was talking about is, is once they finish the potholing, is that they're going to do port in place and not purchase the, the concrete connectors. He says because they're six, they're probably eight weeks out, and that's going to stall the project, so he's going to have Mazingo do those port in place. And he was also talking about maybe using an excruder for the sidewalks. It takes more people power, but it's also done. According to the gentleman from George Reed, they're hoping to be done around Thanksgiving with this phase, and then they'll start the other phase across the street. He told me March, Troy kind of alluded to, they may start that sooner, but we said we may see a respite. This morning, and I know Scott, is Scott still here?
Yeah.
This morning, I, I took it upon myself to not go like my usual time. I waited to go through the heaviest part of traffic, and the signals seemed to be working. Unfortunately, there was an accident this morning, but, you know, I was coming back from Spencer's, and it didn't take that long. It kind of snarled a little bit around Save Mart, but again, once, once it started to flow. One of the good things, and I want to applaud Louise Simpson, her school, I think, previously was starting at, kids could be dropped off at seven fifty-five. They now can be dropped off at seven thirty. So if parents, I think parents know that, they can drive kids off, drop off earlier. But I think as someone said, Veronica, it's, it's, it's a short time inconvenience for our long-term gain for our city, so.
And people seem to be navigating it.
I think so.
A lot better than the first week.
As someone that's been having to drop off for school, I will say, I do appreciate Angels PD being out there, because on, on the first day of school was just crazy, but as the week progressed, it seemed like it was, it was moving a lot quicker than it was. So it was nice to have them out there directing traffic. I don't know what it's been like this week I've been gone, but, and it's just, it's interesting, and it's probably not the place, but since they put that stop sign in, traffic now goes down Mark Twain versus coming down Stanislaw. So it kind of, it's been interesting.
You know, I suggest.
Kind of gives you the light.
I suggested to Louise that she run her buses up Mark Twain and not take them up Stanislaw. I was afraid they couldn't make that turn on the Stanislaw. I'm not sure if they're doing that or not. But the other thing, you know, we don't always celebrate the little things. The little thing is, we live in a wonderful community. If you're out there watching people like I was for over an hour, it's so cool to watch people merge back in. You know, I mean, it's, it's good that we're all in this together, and we're, you know, watching cars come out of the Broadheart trying to make a left-hand turn. Once the light was red, there'd be a gap, and they'd let two or three cars out. You know, that's, that's a neat thing. That's a neat thing. So I don't think I have anything else to report. So we're on to the calendar? Oh, correspondence, correspondence? Okay, so, but we did write a letter of support for CCWD, and now you'll bring that? That'll be next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so that we can share that. And then, calendar?
This is August, what's left. We have, we're here tonight, so we have COG, TAC, and the IRWMA, the CSED. Of course, we have our farmers market back at the.
The CSED were happening at this.
I don't know. I don't know. I'm on that.
You're on it.
Well, that might be, for Kara, she can make it this week. Oh, she might be.
Right here's all of the.
I haven't seen an email. They're normally pretty good about it.
Yeah, I haven't seen an email either. Tomorrow's Wednesday, right?
Yeah.
So maybe tomorrow.
They're normally better than that.
Yeah, they're normally ahead of that. They might have already canceled it a while ago. They're pretty good about canceling.
It's a great place.
And then next week, we still have the UWPA meeting.
Yep.
We look into September. We have a council meeting on the second, right after the holiday. Monday's the holiday.
That's right.
Is it? Oh, is that the?
I'll be here for.
I will be here for COG for September.
Our Monday meeting was canceled.
Say that again?
Of the.
It was, was canceled.
Yes, the.
CSED.
Oh, CSED was? Okay.
Yeah, IRWM, it was canceled.
Oh, IR, done it.
Then we have planning on the eleventh, that canceled, or that's still on. Which one? Planning on the eleventh of September at five PM. I haven't heard it being canceled. No, 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 it's fine. LAFCO, and then our second city council meeting will be.
Fifteenth was canceled.
Was canceled. It's changed to the twenty-second.
Okay.
That's when they're going to do our.
Oh, yeah, it just needs to be deleted.
Public hearing.
Yep, on the twenty-second.
For the public hearing.
Kado.
Oh, that's Vice Mayor. I thought, who's VM?
That's me.
All right. Future agenda items. Please remember to add the fee waiver for the parade to the agenda. Thank you. Any other future?
Council committees. The other thing, so this is a future UWPA agenda item, and it's the full JPA meeting, and we're going to talk about it at the next, our next meeting is an agenda for that. So if there's anything that anybody wants to have on discussion for the full JPA meeting.
I thought we, you're going ahead, yeah? Keep going.
Yeah, no, we're just bringing our ideas at this next Utica meeting, what we want to have.
But we're going to wait, how's the hiring process? I mean, we're going to.
We're going to get an update. I don't, we don't know yet.
But we're going to wait for the new general manager, right?
But we're just starting to talk about, like, what it is that we want on the full JPA meeting.
Because I thought the full JPA meeting was going to be just on the Angels Penn stock and.
No, I think, I mean, if we're going to get together, and there's like three or four things, let's go ahead and knock it out.
Cool. Sounds good.
Yeah. Okay, but we don't have to make that decision tonight.
No, we got to wait to go.
So future agenda items, the fee waiver and giving Kara something to do.
Council committees.
Yeah, council committees.
They're not going to be canceled.
Just for clarification, this council want staff report to have a discussion about what needs to be talked about at the JPA. No. Okay, I was just wondering, just wanted to clarify.
I'd like to get a schedule, get, get on the calendar for a strategic plan meeting. Let's kind of coordinate a lot of people, including department heads and everything.
Yeah.
So we can go down and figure that out.
I agree.
Yep.
Anything else? Okay, hearing none. We are not a journey. We're going to go back into closed session. So we'll give this young man a few moments.